Good morning, everyone. I now call the February 1st, 2024 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. Marion and modeling how our students begin each day. I ask that you please pause with us for a moment of silence. I'll now read our Board Commitment Statement. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will lead a legacy of success. I will now ask the School Board Attorney to explain the rules for this public work session. Good morning, Attorney Powers.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call the speaker's name in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you, Attorney Powers, and good morning, Ms. Brown, too. Nice to have you with us today. She's our paralegal. Mr. Greg Davis, please provide the proof of publication for today's meeting. No worries.
The notice for the February 1st, 2024 work session was published in the Ocali Gazette on January 19th, 2024. Proof of publication has been attached to Board Docs under the "Proof of Publication."
Thank you, Mr. Davis, and welcome to you this morning. We will now begin the work session with the Superintendent's Administrative Briefing. Good morning, Dr. Gullett.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Great to see you all today. I do not have any items, as we are focused on policy, other than to say good morning. Thank you.
Right, likewise. Thank you. Okay, well, we will move on then to our only work session topic for today's meeting, which is Item 4.1, Rural Development Policy Updates. So Attorney Powers and Ms. Brown will be taking center stage today and guiding us through the 360-odd pages of policy updates. I think it would be helpful for any public that is following along, and also as a reminder to the Board, if you would start just by quickly going over the coding and how that relates to our policy review.
Yes, ma'am. These updates are divided into sections, and they are based on sections that are found within our current policies. And those sections begin with the zeros, the 0000, and each policy that begins with a zero will be found under those sections, then the 1000s, 2000s, 3000s, and so on. Now, as to those, I have identified edit codes. And on the first page of the manual which I've provided you, there are those edit codes 1 through 5 will be the number that's located. That's just to the right of each particular policy. These do not show every policy in existence. These show the ones that we are updating. Now, these that have an edit code of 5, which is by far the bulk, those just have a standard law change, some minor or sometimes even major alteration that needed simply to be -- the Board needed to be informed of. As to those that have the other numbers, those are significantly more rare in the mix, which you'll see. For example, if there are any that contain a number 1, and I'm -- there's only one that I know of right away, and that's as to Crisis Management, which is PO 8415. If it has a code 1, that is a code that is -- that is a policy that's been updated and drafted specifically by district staff. So that was Marion policy right from the beginning. If it has a number 2, it requires district staff -- the update called for district staff to complete sections. So I should explain that each of these policies were assigned to a department head, and they went to their staff to find what, within their field of expertise, needed to be altered or changed or selected. So, for example, there may be one that asks us as a district to choose whether we accept a policy Statement A or Policy Statement B. And those would be the ones that you see a number 2. Some of them are fill-in-the-blank, for example. Just requires us to fill in the blank as to, for example, maybe a percentage number or something of that nature. So those have been done. As to the numbers 3, it's a brand-new policy. It's one that came about generally as a legislative update or legislative change, which required a certain policy to be put in. And those have been -- of course, any new policy requires staff review and recommendation to the Board. And then the number 4s are ones which are -- there's a policy that's actually been rescinded. I'm not aware that there were actually any number 4s within this batch. So the point is, is that prior to -- in order to keep -- there is a number 4, I'm sorry, that's a pointee's, PO 0153. That's one of our first policies we're dealing with. So each of these policies has been reviewed by Neola to suggest updates to us. Now, these are no longer Neola policies. These are our policies. And they make recommendations as to potential updates. And then we review those through our staff, and each staff within their field of expertise makes a recommendation. That recommendation is carried through to the Legal Department. We take a look at those, then we bring them forward to the Board for the Board to review and accept or decline the -- or, in some cases, modify the suggested edits. So each one of these that is within your list has been reviewed by staff. They've made their selections, and the vast bulk of them, especially the number 5s, are ones which most likely will require very little other than the previous review you've given them. We'll push forward and get through as many of these today as we like. We'll take them in sections. And then if there are those -- for those remaining, we'll begin those on our second Policy Update Work Session Day. So that would be a good start. Now, I will tell you that every time that there have been selections or items that may need update, Neola releases a sub-update. So they might release 10, or 12, or 15. Well, of course, because of advertising time and because we've got a new update coming up, and we just finished another update, and it takes a lot of time, many of those get subsumed into a single session. So we have now, since our last one, which is less than a year ago, we have now five individual smaller updates that constitute this large update. And each time there's a new update, we have to compare it against the previous updates to find out, you know, what other items needed to be added, or has it overruled prior language? So this is five subsection updates that have been conglomerated into one, and when we're done with these, our policies will now be updated. I did not anticipate, when we started this process, that we would have the number of updates that we have needed, but that is simply an artifact of the fact that our legislature's been very prolific with both removing and adding language to laws that govern schools, but also, as we've discussed in the past, nearly every Florida statute section has areas that deal with the things that we deal with, whether it's transportation, food service, whether it's specific education statutes. There's so many that impact us, and so to all of those policies, there have been quite a number of additions. So what I would suggest that we begin with in going in order is to start with the 1,000 policies, and that's because the zeros policies, we added those. Those were advertised appropriately, but we still had some of those bylaws policies needed to be issued to you. Those were issued to you recently as an update on Board Docs, but those are specifically Board business. Those are bylaws of the Board. Those are not affecting areas outside the business of the Board. I'd suggest we start with the 1,000s and move forward from there and review. And I would also suggest that as we move forward, rather than taking each policy, calling it out individually, seeing if anybody has any changes to every individual policy, because my feeling is that, based on past experience, most of them you will not. We will start with a section, Section 1,000, for example. And in the 1,000 section, we will identify, starting with policy -- let's see, that would be 1111. And I would ask then that everybody review that section of policies that begin in the 1,000 coding and tell me if there are any alterations or changes, if anybody wishes to discuss any particular item from the 1,000s. And then we'll -- once we complete that, we'll move on to the 2,000s and proceed from there. So Board, any questions, observations, or alternate ways of handling that? Open.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. And, you know, this is a perpetual process.
Yes.
As adjustments come down and new laws are put into place, like you mentioned, that triggers us to continue with our review and with the deregulation conversation going on. Hopefully, you know, there'll be a tiny bit of light at the end of the tunnel, and some of these will be condensed and lessened. But we have a lot to address this morning, so I'm happy to take your lead on the system of working through these policies as long as the rest of the Board is in agreement.
Now, the Board was also issued these large policy manuals. These will be, as of the end of the day today, they will be obsolete. So keep any notes. You can write on them, do whatever you want to. This is for you to view as we go along. We also will have the large screen in front here, which Ms. Brown will be directly making any changes or alterations on. As you see there, there was also a PDF file that was issued to you, which has all of those listed in one document if you want to scan along or do Word searches or things like that. So I'm gonna presume -- I can't really tell from the angle. Is everyone able to see this screen as we edit? Okay. And if we -- as we go forward, any edits, if you see anything that, when we begin editing, that was not the intended edit, let us know. We can do it all on the fly. And once we enter those in, those will then be submitted into the manual to be voted on and updated at a future Board meeting. So we're making the edits live as we move forward, as we go. Okay?
Right.
So, beginning with the 1,000, this is a section on Administration. Now, I should have mentioned that, in some cases, there are policies that are very, very similar policies that cross-reference other policies. So there may be a policy that applies differently to administrators than it does to teachers, or applies differently to teachers than it does to students. So if we get -- usually, those are all -- all three of them will be up here in different sections, however. But we can also draw side-by-side comparisons if that comes up at any section along the way. So for the 1,000 sections, we have, starting with PO 1111 and moving through -- yep, moving through to PO 1430.03, sick leave. Ms. Campbell?
I mean, are we ready to start asking questions, Chair?
Let's jump right in.
Perfect. So my first question is on Policy 1120. This is in our notebooks at SBA 008. And first of all, thank you to Ms. Brown for responding to all of my questions initially, and so the response has led me to another question. This is at the top of that page, the second paragraph in green, again, SBA 008, Policy The question I have is about the -- it's not about the word telephone. So in the second paragraph, this policy requires admins to have listed telephones at their residence. My question is not about telephone, because telephone is -- can be defined as a cellular device. My question is about the word listed, because listed telephone number, we don't, to my knowledge, have a directory of listed cellphone numbers. And so that's where, if this is statute language, we need to possibly have the legislature clarify the word listed.
We could not -- we looked at that. We were unable to find that in statutory reference. So I was unable to locate that in statutory reference. That being the case, the Board may choose to alter this section by saying that it -- members of administrative staff are required to have access to telephones at their residences. I think the point here was that, at some point, there was an intention by some districts to include listed telephone numbers, though I don't know why it was coming as an update right now. I'm looking -- I can look here and see. As to any Neola notes? I see none.
The paragraph in and of itself causes me pause, just because I'm not certain if that requires that administrative staff have listed telephone numbers at their residences that the district has access to, or if that's asking for publicly listed phone numbers of all of our administrative staff. That causes me concern. And if that's the way statute reads, we need to work on that statute.
And as I said, I was unable to find a statutory reference that requires this.
Okay.
This was 1120, so.
Yeah, 1120.
I mean, I -- just as to play a devil's advocate, Dr. Gullett has the authority to waive it for six months with extensions, and that language is in there as well. So if Dr. Gullett felt like that exposure for our principals and assistant principals was not appropriate, it does state that it can be waived for six months with review and extension at the end of the six month. So in the interim of not changing language but waiting for legislation to change, Dr. Gullett has that authority to.
Right, great point. What do you think, Dr. Gullett?
I have to read it. Honestly, I have to review it. I don't have a problem with removing it if it's not statutory, but without having an opportunity to go through and review, I would want to make sure we avoid any unintended consequences.
Okay. Well, and, you know, that, to me, is the point of the six months. If we find things like this that sound potentially troubling, I tend to agree with Board Member Campbell on this one. Privacy and accessibility are a balance, right? So if you're comfortable with implementing what you have available to you, you know, subject to review, that'll give you a chance to review it. In fact, you have six months. All right. Is that -- is that -- does that work for you, Attorney Powers?
Yes, ma'am. And I'll just state that the only note that I have on this is that the revisions to these policies, and this was as to 1120, 3120, and 4120, are the result of Senate Bill 676, which revised language addressing when a person is ineligible for educator certification or employment in any position that requires direct contact with students. I do not see how that would be accomplished here, and I don't see anything -- I can look up Senate Bill 676 to find out that particular item to ensure that's not one that simply has not yet been adopted yet but has been passed, or hasn't been codified in Florida statute. But at this point, I believe that the Board has two options, and that would be either to simply delete that paragraph, which says members of the administrative staff are required to have listed telephones at their residences on through to the end of what's in green there. That would probably be the cleanest way to do it, and if we need to, we can later add it back. But I don't see any mandate that requires it unless it was within the legislative history of 676, and I haven't been able to find that yet.
Thank you. Comments from the Board?
Chair, if Attorney Powers is comfortable with us deleting that, obviously, we're not adopting the policies tomorrow. So if we make that change now and delete it, and in the interim, in the next two, three weeks, he finds out that actually we do need to have it back in, then let's do it. But at this point, I would recommend that we delete it, because why put that responsibility on Dr. Gullett to make that every six months to say, oh, yeah, by the way, none of our administrators' phone numbers need to be listed anymore? I mean, if it's not needed at all and it's not law, I can't come up with a logical reason why we would need to require every administrative staff member to have a listed telephone number.
Are we -- excuse me, Madam Chair, are we removing that whole paragraph?
I would say the whole paragraph from all administrators through -- Board may describe, because the rest of it is also related to that.
Actually, it would just be the second paragraph.
Second paragraph, right, right. Okay, she --
Members.
Members of the administrative staff through justification for the waiver still exists.
Right, okay.
So you're comfortable deleting it, Dr. --
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Dr. Gullett?
I would suspect if there's any alteration, it would be somewhere that's perhaps buried in an admin code that I don't know about, so.
In case you'll let us know.
Right. I will state also, though, that any district-issued cellphone, it would be a -- if there were district-issued cellphones, those are subject to public record anyway, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So district cellphones, completely understand. But this one talks about residences, and I was like--
Yes, it's almost like the old-school, you know, landline.
Telephone books.
Yeah, and telephone books.
We found where that PICO dollar is being paid.
By our administrators that are required to have them. Never mind.
Almost seems like pretty outdated language.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I think we're good on that one.
All right. So I have a note for 1120. Continuing on with the 1,000 categories, you can see on the left there, after 1120, the next ones are background screening, employment, history checks, moving through Standards of Ethical Conduct, and all the way through to the end.
Okay.
I'm just looking, clarifying the comments that Ms. Brown made back to me on some of my questions, so bear with me just one second.
And I -- it strikes me that, in order to make sure nothing's passed, in order to give appropriate wait time, I can read out the name of the policy of each of those in the 1,000, so it's clear what we are looking at. We have 1111, Designation of a New Position, 1120, Employment of Administrators, 1121.01, Background Screening. One, two--
I know you're on a roll, but it would also, I think, be helpful for anyone that's following along to share what code that is, because so far, these are just Neola updates, so that aren't requiring a lot of--
As to which, right. Each of the ones that I've read so far are all an edit code 5.
Okay.
Policy 1210, Standards of Ethical Conduct, edit code 5. 1213, Student Supervision and Welfare, is also a 5. 1242, Professional Learning, also a 5. 1420.02, Lump Sum of Payment of Vacation, it's also a 5. Deferred Retirement -- 1420.03, Deferred Retirement Drop, that is also a 5.
Yes, I think--
Yes, I did. Attorney Powers, I believe those two have been coded incorrectly. 1420.02, as well as 1420.03, are both listed as Marion policies.
Let me pull it up.
Sure.
It would still be coded as a 5, because if Neola recommended--
Because Neola recommended a policy to a Marion --
Right. It is likely that our policy differed enough from Neola's that it was maintained instead as a Marion policy. However, there is something that would still be a policy update, and staff would have reviewed it in that vein.
Okay. Because that was my question on 1420.03, which in our notebook is SBA 021, because I had asked if this was a Neola update to a Marion policy. And my understanding is these edits to this particular policy, again, SBA 021, these were specifically requested changes by our supervisor of payroll. So I -- just for clarification's sake, because I had questions, if Neola was making changes to our Marion policies and it was the edits were made at the request of our supervisor of payroll?
No, it would have been as a result of a law change, regardless of whether it was a Marion policy or a Neola policy.
Okay. Okay. Then that clarifies that question for me.
And that's an important distinction in terms of the role of Neola, to make sure that everyone's, you know, clear on that, that they are recommending changes based on current and updated law changes.
Right.
Not their opinion of what it should be. That's for us to decide, while still remaining legal.
Now, as to the next one, 1430.0--
Three.
Three?
Sick leave.
As to sick leave, this is coded as a 2, indicating that it required district staff to complete sections. This is one in which staff opted to reject the proposed changes by Neola. So if you wanted to take a look at that one, this is the staff-reviewed policy. If you want to pull it up for them.
Right. So this is the one, Chair -- I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. This is the one that I did have questions about specifically, just because of the cross-reference that this one has. So specifically, if we look at page SBA 023, so this again is Policy Sick Leave, Policy 1430.03, if we look at the top of page 023, these two items that are being stricken, struck through, whatever, are included in our instructional language, but not included in our administrator's sick leave.
It's already -- that's been corrected.
Okay. So we -- these are no longer struck through.
Right.
Perfect. Okay. So that answered that question. Then I have one more question on this particular policy, because something that is missing out of this policy also that is in, and maybe that's also been corrected, is what are we doing about terminal pay for sick leave for administrators? And so I have a reference to SBA 128, but I mean, that -- if we want to go back and forth, but regardless, the one thing that's missing out of this whole sick leave policy for administrators does not talk about what we do for terminal pay for sick leave for administrators.
Why don't we take a look at that?
Okay.
It is jumping around a little bit, but it's an extremely related policy, so I believe that's probably important for checking.
Right.
Give us just a moment to pull that up.
Yeah, no problem.
From 14.03 to--
To -- I wrote it down. 3430.03 is the policy I'm referencing that's the cross-reference.
SBA.
SBA 128, Policy 3430.03.
And as you see right here on this one, this is the -- it was still with the 14.03 or 1430.03, there's where terminal pay benefits are listed under Number A8 on this policy. So let's move now to the 3403 under--
3430.03. 3430.03.
Yep. 3430.03.
Yes.
And under Number 7, it's listed here, when an employee retires and receives terminal pay benefit -- oh, we bounced it to the second one. Hang on.
So the section in the -- on page SBA 128, that's specifically titled Terminal Pay for Sick Leave. Sick Leave, that section, this is on, it's three of four on, you know, that entire section is missing from the administrator policy.
It's, it's deleted from this one, too.
So we're, okay, so it was in green on ours, and now all of that has been struck through?
It's no longer there?
They, they don't want it.
They don't want any information on the terminal pay for sick leave?
You said staff rejected this.
Yes.
So we're not doing anything with sick leave?
I don't know, I'd have to check.
We received an email from Becky Drake regarding that, and so staff opted to eliminate this provision.
They just kept them the way they were.
We just, right, we just kept it the way that it had been previously, and not accept the update.
Okay.
So it's, it's addressed, but not in the way that Neola recommended?
Right.
And how, how was it addressed? I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see that, that you were saying, that we actually have a statement on how we're addressing terminal pay, so, or terminal sick, sick leave, what's it, terminal pay for sick leave, thank you. I just want to make sure that the policy addresses, when you leave, that we're doing something with sick leave, or we're not.
I think that would have to be under a procedure.
Procedure.
Not a district policy.
Okay.
We have here under A7, the only comment that is, that is included within policy is, when an employee retires and receives terminal pay benefits, based on unused sick leave, all unused sick leave credit shall become immediately invalid.
So that's, I'm sorry.
That's the only thing I have.
Okay, I, it's, it's just looking at the things that have been struck through in our notebooks versus what they've changed since we got these. Okay, so they're leaving in items 6 and 7, when an employee retires and receives terminal pay benefits based on unused sick leave, all unused sick leave credit shall become immediately invalid. And that's how they're addressing terminal pay for sick leave. Okay?
So that whole last section is gone, terminal pay for sick leave?
Correct. We've struck through all of D, and then option, there was, there were options to choose, and there were three different options, and when you say all of that, truthfully, even if they'd accepted, it would have been only like a sentence. There was three different options of sentences. But they chose not to select one of those sentences because I presume that item A7 in this case, was it A7, or, was, actually, in this case, it was a?
Six something.
Well, A7 is your, if you're talking about immediately invalid.
Yeah, in, in 1430.03, it was number 8. When an employee retires and receives terminal pay benefits, based on unused sick leave, all unused sick leave credit shall become immediately invalid. And that was the same thing as to A7 in 3430.03.
And that was how our policy is currently written?
Yes.
Okay, all right, if that's.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, Ms. Boston Ellis has confirmed it's been updated in our, our procedures. As you know, after the last round of policy updates, we've been working really hard on procedures, so the details and the procedures.
Great, thank you for that clarification and validation. Does that answer your question on that?
It does.
Okay, all right, onward.
That concludes the 1,000 section.
No more questions on the 1,000 section. Anyone else on the board for the 1,000s? Attorney Powers, any more comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to, moving on to 2,000 programs, we have 2111, parent and family engagement, that is a 5. 2120, school improvement, is a Code 3, indicating it was a new policy that required staff review.
New policy as required by the legislature?
I'll need to take a look at it.
It says at the top, and this was my question, because it says at the top that this was a Marion policy, but Neola recommended that we use their version of the school improvement policy as opposed to what we had.
So what's in pink would have been our?
Our Marion policy.
And then the green would be the recommendation that we adopt, and staff apparently liked that, concurred.
Okay.
And we updated it from a Marion to a Neola?
Oh, right, and it was, it had been a Marion in the past, so now, if you look at the very bottom, it's, it shows that it's Neola 2023 now. That means, in the event that there was a, any future updates or disagreements as to internal conflicts between this policy and administrative code or something like that, Neola will, will review, defend, and process for us.
So staff has reviewed, and they're comfortable with the proposed changes, and that's why they're asking us for our blessing, correct?
Right, and this is 2120, and this was assigned to Ms. Talbert Irving, and we did hear response back.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board on this one? Okay, thank you.
We have 2210, curriculum development, and I'll just keep going unless they're, you can presume they're 5s unless I stop on one.
And board, if you have any questions as he's running down to the list, then let's stop and discuss.
Please, please interrupt me. 2215, program of instruction. 2270, religion in the curriculum.
Can you pause just one second, Attorney Powers, I just want to?
As to 2215, 2270, and 2271, those are in the addendum that you received, so we may want to hold off discussion on those until the next session. They're, they're in the addendum packet that was posted.
Let's hold off till the next session so that we can have time to review those.
2370, educational options. Another that's on the addendum is 2371, that's Hope Scholarship.
Okay.
That's also on the addendum, so I'll hold off on that one. 2410, school health services. 2410.01, mental health services. 2417, comprehensive health education.
Attorney Powers?
Yes, ma'am.
Mental health services is coded as a?
That's coded as a 3, correct. Do you want to go to that one?
Does anyone have any questions on mental health services?
2410.01, mental health services.
It is a brand-new policy, but it's statute-driven.
So SBA what?
39.
039.
039, it's, as Board Member Campbell said, it's a, it's a statute-driven.
And?
New policy.
Staff accepted this one as is with no recommended changes.
Okay, so we're just following statute on that one?
Yes, ma'am.
No alterations? All right, thank you, that's been a hot topic. I think after that, you mentioned comprehensive health education.
Next would be comprehensive, I was just making sure that each board member was caught up there. 2417, comprehensive health education. Then under 2421, career and technical education, that is a, coded as a 2, that required staff input, and we're pulling it up now.
You have the SBA number, Allison?
SBA 046 is when the language starts on this policy.
Thank you.
So 2421 is on the screen in front of you there. It's coded as a 2, required staff to make selections, and what you see in green are the, are the additions.
Personally, I really like seeing this. I think that anything that we can do to formally add relevance to our educational programming and reach all students is a win, so I'm glad that district staff had the opportunity to complete sections and tailor it to the strategic goals of our district. I don't know if there's, you know, anything else that anyone cares to add beyond that, but I think this is an important and good step. So thank you, Dr. Gullett, to you and your, your staff for completing sections and really tailoring it for our district, including the career fair during the school year and, you know, I love the idea of joint career fairs to make it more accessible.
And at a location that's within driving distance of wherever, so we're not just having one in a location that's an hour away for a student to drive.
Correct, and, and held during the school day.
Right.
Yes, so kids can actually participate, and they've been really well attended, the ones that attended by South NC. Okay, anything else on that one? We ready to move along?
Next, we have 2423. I'm sorry, yes, sir.
That one still has the, that one also includes the dual enrollment.
Going back to 2421, hang on.
Correct.
And the career dual enrollment.
How's that affect, Dr. Gullett, the changes with the college and us right now?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
You gotta put your microphone down.
I'm sorry, how's that affect us with, you know, the change that we're having with dual enrollment, like at Westport and stuff now?
I don't, I don't think it does, I think it just articulates, if you're looking at SBA 050.
050.
Yeah, it delineates the career dual enrollment and identifies articulation agreements. I don't, I don't think there's a conflict, we could certainly review it again, but I don't, I think it just allows for those options for our students.
Ed Middle, the screen up there is the section, too, that she's referring to.
Right, okay.
I don't know, Attorney Powers, if you see that differently, I think it just allows for those to occur.
Right, and there's?
Career in college.
Correct. As to 24, let's see, where were we, 2423, school-to-work program, and this is also one which was a new policy, required staff review, and they had to check which boxes, A through G, applied to our section, and those were the boxes chosen, all A through G. Yep.
And then our changes are in green?
Yes.
Okay.
And then down at the bottom, the Florida work-based learning opportunities. Board shall provide that each student enrolled in grades 9 through 12 has access to at least one work-based learning opportunity, and it identifies the skills sought, the criteria that are sought in each of those.
Thank you, and I understand that age has something to do with this, you know, grades 9 through 12, I wish it said grades 6 through 12. And I don't know if that's possible, but the sooner we give kids these windows of opportunity, the more connected they're going to stay in school.
And I think that aspirationally, that could be something that, given the fact that we've encoded this within policy now, could be something that the board or operations through the superintendent chooses to try to emphasize in 6 through 9 as well, once they've gotten compliance and made sure that 9 through 12 is also taken care of. So that is something that can be an ongoing part of the strategic goals.
Thank you, because I know it's something that we've talked about a lot, and this was one that I had marked for that very reason. So I know that we're doing, doing a lot to address middle school and, and the element of relevance as well as the rigor. I'd be happy to see that at some point, whenever it's appropriate, but I know right now, it's something that we are really working on and providing opportunities for, and, and it's great to see that continue. Anything else from board on this? Good, keep going, all right.
Okay, continuing on, we have 2431, which is interscholastic athletics.
I do have a question about this one, Attorney Powers.
I thought you might.
Well, I, I do, it's, it's interesting to me the way, this is SBA 056, if you're not on that page. The way that, I'm, I'm guess Neola has put this in, first of all, it's interesting to me that junior high schools are delineated there, because I guess there possibly are junior highs around the state.
That are called middle schools?
I know, that don't have 6th grade. I, I love the junior high model personally, but that's just who I am, I grew up in that model, so, but what's interesting to me here is that it specifically indicates that high schools are grade 10 through 12. So if we put this in policy, can freshmen not participate in the high school varsity?
I, my impression is that needs to be modified.
Okay.
I, this was reviewed by staff, but that apparently seems to be something that wasn't caught.
I just.
Though I, I say that, I also, I personally am not aware whether these are designations that mirror designations made by FHSAA or, or somewhere else. So it may be that the purpose of this policy is that it models or mirrors something that's occurring elsewhere, so if we make alterations, it may, you know, cause some difficulties there. I, I can, I can pull this one off to the side and have staff re-review for that particular purpose, and this one is 2431. And, yeah, Ms. Talbert Irving, she had, she unfortunately gets to be the funnel for all of these, and she assigns them to each of the people, so I'll make sure that she has assigned it to someone to look for that particular, that particular question, so.
Which is a great point, because if we want our policies to mirror us, and?
Right.
We should be looking at stating that a different way.
Right, middle school and high school.
Well, the thing that concerned me the most is that?
That will change.
We do have freshmen that play on varsity teams.
Right.
So if we're saying that high schools are grade 10 through 12 in interscholastic athletics, we're going to do something in policy that's not going to?
We would violate.
We would be violating our policy in several schools, I would say, several sports.
Yeah, and I, and I think somebody knows more about interscholastic sports and current how things are done than I do, needs to be, needs to be advising you on that.
Can't we just take it out and say competition involving middle schools?
Just not make it great specific, middle schools.
Yeah, not great.
Junior high schools and high schools.
Yeah.
I would suggest we take that out and just refer to the, the statute and the FHSAA guidelines, and then if and when they exchange, we don't need to change the policy.
Yeah.
It's less restrictive, it's based on just statute alone.
As I think about it, too, Ms. Dobbins in her presentation last week presented the potential forecast of a middle high school concept, and so we would not want to create limiting factors there as well, so that would be another reason.
Brain ranges, perhaps.
Okay, so let's take a look at this then. This, the, the third sentence under 2431 now is all-encompassing, because it includes middle schools, junior high, and high schools. So I'm looking at Neola's notes, it says, this policy, 2431, was revised to include provisions of House Bill 225, which authorized traditional public school students to participate in interscholastic and interscholastic activities through an agreement with a private school. So that, there may be differences in, in standards between the two. Sentence, or paragraph 3 here does include all, middle school, junior high, and high schools, and essentially says it's just going to be in accordance with standards that are established by the district. Now, going down to students enrolled in a private school, charter school, Florida virtual school, may also participate, can you move up on that? And, so I think that's the only place where junior high school occurs in this policy, right?
Right, and it's the only place where it actually spells out what grade levels. The grade levels is what causing me pause.
Think if we take the grade levels out?
Yeah, could we just say competition shall be in accordance with standards and guidelines established by the school district?
Because we even have elementary track meets.
We do, they run fast.
I know, they run really fast. So maybe if we could just take? So maybe if we could just take all that out entirely, and say, I agree with Chair Thrower, competition shall be in accordance with standards and guidelines established by the school district.
But this is, this is specifically.
FHSAA.
Well, and it's talking, and it's also talking about, I mean, I assume there's not competition. I think specifying that it does not include elementary grades and does include grade six is important.
Okay.
Because there are some competitions interscholastic, which may be, it may be, you know, even out of state, which, in which junior high is the model.
Could we not just say competition involving grades six and greater, or grade six and up, or grade six through 12?
I'm trying to think of how, the board can do whatever the board chooses. I think here, I'm trying to think of any situation in which delineating it out as these three will actually cause any harm, and I cannot think of that. Middle schools, junior highs, and high schools, so it gives us all options. I mean, if you're in sixth grade, it's gonna, you're gonna be one of those two, and if you're in grades, ah, I see, there's a problem there, is, high schools should actually be grades nine through 10.
That's the problem.
That's, that's the main, right, so.
That was the problem. I said freshmen are participating on varsity teams, and so we cannot delineate that high school sports are only 10 through 12.
May I, may I suggest that we have, that we have staff review this to be brought back to you, so that we can clarify that question, because I, I think in tinkering with it, I don't want us to modify something in a way that messes up the way that they do through FHSAA. So 2431, as to junior high, I will ask them to review that particular item, and the next time we come back, we'll look at it.
Sounds like a plan. The only other thing I was thinking was to just say again, interscholastic athletic competition shall be in accordance with standards and guidelines established by the school district to make it more definitive, but.
That, and that would be fine, because then that's less, that leaves open all, all options. If that's something the board would like to do, I would concur with that.
Can you repeat it?
Yes, interscholastic, interscholastic athletic competition shall be in accordance with standards and guidelines established by the school district.
Yeah, that sounds, sounds like you're an attorney, Chair Thrower.
And I'm sure staff is listening, and if there's something wrong with that, I'm sure they'll let us know.
Yes. Let's keep the baby in the bathwater.
Okay.
All right.
Interscholastic athletic, not athletics. Let's get rid of the S at the end.
Athletic.
Okay.
All right.
Moving on from there.
Summer programs.
That's 2440, summer programs. No, we're not gonna bring it back unless staff asks. Then 2450, adult and community education.
All fives.
2452, disclosure of security policy. That is a new policy. We can bring it up so that you can review that.
That the SBA would be helpful. 063, okay, thank you. All right, anything from the board?
63, yes.
We needed a policy on disclosure of security policy, so that policy is now in place, it's been reviewed by staff, by Mr. McFadden, and he's comfortable with this going in as our policy on that point. 2455, dropout prevention and accelerated international program. That's also a new policy, 2455, academic intervention program.
Parent, parent of a student has the right to receive parental portal.
Like Skyward.
Right.
It's substituted parent portal or parental portal instead of certified mail.
It still says receives a written notice.
Yes.
By parent portal instead of, so it does need to be adjusted.
Well, the written notice can be written and posted to the parent portal, it can be a document that's written. I don't think written means like pencil paper or a photograph. I mean, it's, it would still be something written.
It's almost like an assumption that everybody uses their parent portal.
Well, and we know that they don't.
But there's. 067. Host. 067.
And this is a staff-opted change, the staff made this change, it's not a Neola recommendation, so that's just a question for staff and the board as to how you want it.
I have, I have an issue with that one, because there's an assumption that everybody has access to computers and to the digital world, and we know that everyone doesn't. Yes, we may all have a Skyward account, but everyone doesn't have access, and we found that out a couple of years ago.
Dr. Gullett?
Yes, I'm asking, so the green is staff recommendation?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm more comfortable with certified mail, because we can track it.
Agree.
Especially for dropout prevention.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
We don't need to think that their dropout prevention notification's gonna occur electronically.
Needs to be certified mail.
In a perfect world where everybody was.
Now, I will say, board, as a reminder, it will cost us, it costs us more money to do that, but I do think this is, this needs to be certified mail.
Yes, I think it could cost us a lot more in another direction, so.
Either way, it's gonna cost us.
Yeah.
Right, right.
I think certified mail is a cheaper option, certified mail. All right. Thank you, Dr. Gullett, for that.
There have been modifications to 2460, which is exceptional student education. 2520, selection and adoption of instructional materials. 2521, instructional materials program, and that required some staff input. We can pull it up if you'd like, 2521, instructional materials program.
Is there any questions from the board or clarifications on that one?
If not, we can move straight on. 2522, challenges to adoption or use, and it's also coded two. 2575, service learning, also coded a two.
Pause really quick, I'm just trying to get to that page, and I know I had a question on it, I just need to follow up on what the thought was.
Which one you on, 2522?
2522. And then 2575.
It's SBA 098.
091.
098.
098?
Yep. Service learning. That was a two.
Yes, my question was actually on page 099. The way that this paragraph reads says, beginning with the class of 2023, "All students who graduate from a district high school shall perform 100 hours of community service as an individual graduation requirement." I understand that's a Bright Futures requirement, but this sentence says "all students who graduate," and so I'm, again, that's at the top of page 099, a policy 2575.
And it says both, "as an individual graduation requirement and as an eligibility requirement for participation in Florida Bright Futures."
Right.
Scholarship, and, you know, I'm not sure that our students with just significant cognitive and even physical disabilities may be able, as a combination, may be able to do that.
Sure. I mean, I just, we're not currently.
Unless it's addressed through the IEP.
Yeah, but every graduate currently is not.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't think we're in a place to elevate the bar for graduation requirement within our own context. I think we're working hard to meet the state's standards for graduation requirement, and to add an additional threshold that we are very well aware is gonna be a limiting factor for our students is not in our best interest.
Well, and this would be retroactive also, because class of 2023 already graduated. They're gone, and I don't think we did that. So I'm just concerned about the word "all."
Are we moving, we keep moving the goalposts right now?
I can also report that this policy was revised overall, partial, part of it was based on a requirement from Florida Administrative Code 6A-20.028, and what that did was it permitted students to utilize paid work hours to meet Bright Futures scholarship requirements, but did not mandate what the rest of this would, would include, which would say that we also would require that as a, as a.
District.
As a district-wide graduation requirement.
Can we scratch that?
We can, and there are a number of these that some, some districts as a whole, much like, you know, FSBA, there are FSBA districts which comply with certain numbers of things. Many districts begin to adopt something, and then Neola makes it part of the next recommended update, and that may be one that we don't want.
I tend to agree. Dr. Gullett?
So we will edit.
Gullett agrees.
So probably just that whole sentence, I guess?
So we would.
Because the sentence in green, "For purposes of Florida Bright Futures Scholarship's paid work or the combination of 100."
First of all, I think, yeah.
Anyway, that's the one that they chose.
Yeah, they chose it, that's why I'm.
Just take the whole thing out.
Well, I think the second sentence is perfectly fine.
Right, the green sentence, absolutely.
For the purposes of the Florida Bright Futures Scholarship Program, paid work or the combination of 100 work hours also fulfill a community service requirement.
And that's per statute, too.
Right, now, or per administrative code. Let's go up to see how that flows with what is above it. Superintendent is authorized to include service learning courses in middle and high school curriculum and to include such course codes in the district's academic program that is recommended to the school board for approval, and then, "For purposes of the Bright Futures Scholarship Program, paid work or the combination of 100 work hours also fulfill the community service hours requirement." So we don't have any, we need a lead-up paragraph, or lead-up phrase to that?
I think.
Beginning with the class of 2024.
I don't know that it needs to be that. I think it needs to start, "For the purpose of the Florida Bright Futures Scholarship Program, comma, district high school students shall perform 100 hours of community service as an individual graduation requirement to participate, and paid work or the combination of 100 will fulfill that requirement." So I think we need to somehow combine those two sentences, I can read that again if that's helpful, but.
Yeah, let's, let's.
I think the paragraph needs.
For purposes of the Florida Bright Futures Scholarship Program.
Yes.
District high school students.
High school students shall perform 100 hours of community service and.
Or.
Or.
Or paid.
Or paid work.
I was gonna say, I was just gonna say, "And paid work or a combination of 100 also shall fulfill that requirement."
And.
Well, because and means in addition.
Addition to it would be or.
Okay.
I think it's community service, comma, paid work, comma, or the combination of 100 work hours also fulfill a community service.
Okay.
Right, we're listing them, the options.
Okay.
So district high school students shall perform 100 hours of community service, comma, 100 hours of paid work, comma, or the combination of 100 work hours.
Right.
I would just say, or the combination of the two. I don't think you need to list the 100 work hours again.
Okay, and you guys can see that, I can't see the edits.
District high school students shall perform 100 hours of community service, comma, 100 hours of paid work, comma, or the combination of the two, and then I would just say, "To fulfill the community service hours requirement."
Perfect.
I don't think the word "also" is necessary.
So final read, "For purposes of the Florida Bright Futures Scholarship Program, district high school students shall perform 100 hours of community service, comma, 100 hours of paid work, comma, or the combination of the two, to fulfill the community service hours requirement."
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Are we gonna continue with, beginning with the class of 2023?
I don't think that matters.
No, because that's, that's a.
We've, we've redacted that entirely.
Yeah.
We actually haven't put any requirement, this will become finalized, we don't wanna, I presume, since we modified this, it can only help people who are looking for Bright Futures Scholarship, because they can now have multiple options. So we're not dropping a requirement on that didn't exist, we're dropping an option on. So we could put it as, beginning with the class of 2024, so that they can take advantage of it right away, or we can remain silent as to when it begins, because it begins when.
Well, yeah, because we're gonna adopt it before the end of the year anyway.
Right.
We could hope, right?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just wanted to confirm, Ms. Talbot Irving has indicated none of this came from the academic team, so I think it just, maybe the legal team wrote it in, but there was nothing from our team that was added, this whole section, so it wasn't a recommendation.
Interesting. Thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
Well, they, yeah, the only recommendation that they made was simply by choosing one of the two options.
Right.
And the second option was.
They didn't provide it, yeah, which makes sense.
Yeah, they didn't write the option, they just chose it.
They didn't read the full statement that they were checking.
So Attorney Powers, is it your recommendation that we just keep it with 2023, or just?
I would just leave that entirely out, and.
Take it out.
Simply, right, simply say, "For the purposes of," just as it is right now, so what's in the green is all you'll see.
You just scared yourself, because it disappeared.
That's right, back, back. Okay, all right, we good on that one?
Yes.
Okay.
The next policy I have questions on.
All right, well then, let's ask it.
So the next policy is 2623.
2623, student assessment.
I'm looking specifically at SBA 102, and this is kind of just a point of clarification, SBA 102, at the bottom of that page where it talks about scheduling of assessments, the policy will read that the board will establish schedules for the administration of any statewide district-required assessments and approve the schedules as an agenda item at a board meeting.
Necessary.
That's, that was my question, I guess, is it, Terry got clarification and said, it's a technical correction relating to a statutory citation in a renumbered SB 7039, so I haven't looked at that policy, but I just, it's a clarifying question, if that, if the new statute, House Bill 7039, says that we have to approve the schedule, that's, and, and then it says the board will submit the schedules to the Department of Education by October 1st, so that will just add to the list of the things the board has to get done in the summer, and which is fine.
Sounds like a deregulation.
I know, that they may have just added in, and we already gotta deregulate it.
Right, right. Because the part about the board will publish the testing schedules on its website using the Department of Education's uniform calendar, well, if there's actually a Department of Education's uniform calendar, then I agree that it's a good idea for us to post it, but I'm not sure that that would be a board-driven task unless it's statutorily required. I don't know, what do you think, Dr. Gullett?
I would, I just made a note to look at 7039, I think we'd have to review that.
Okay.
I do know there was conversation about assessments in the state, but I don't, I'd have to go back and see where it landed.
Yes, because that just seems really odd that the board and not the superintendent and team would establish schedules for the administration of any statewide district-required assessments, because we have windows in some schools.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Correct, and I would just say that, yeah, the caution would be, because the districts have windows and the schools have, choose within that window what works best.
Yes.
We'd have, it would be really just a big.
Yes.
Framework of time. Not, not very specific, and maybe not so helpful to the community.
So you're gonna check on that?
I will.
Okay.
And while you're checking in, the same policy, just at the next page, 103, also specifies, this is item B at the top of the page, it says, "The board will not schedule more than 5% of a student's total school hours in a school year to administer statewide standardized or coordinated screening and progress monitoring," and that is statute-driven, but again, it says the board will not schedule, and so I just wanna make sure that the board is supposed to be approving all of that.
We already abide by the state requirement, so, right, not sure about the board's.
We can research it, we can research this further. This update was a technical correction related to a statutory citation that was renumbered in House Bill 7039. Mr. Whitehouse reviewed this policy, and I can research the background in 7039, and we can bring this back for board review again later. But board, I'm gonna request at this time that we take about a five-minute break, because we have some technical stuff. because we have some technical stuff we have to update and get reconnected for, for us to move forward for additional policies when we get to the 3000s.
Okay. All right, great. We will break now then at 10:13 a.m.
Attorney Powers?
We're back from our short break at 10:25 a.m. and resuming our policies discussion. Attorney Powers?
That was also a five, and I'll begin just not listing what code it was unless it's not a five.
I can't be to be an academically high-performing school district. They get a lot of flexibility.
Absolutely.
That if we had now would probably help us become an academically high-performing district.
That's the ironic thing.
That is the irony. All right, moving right along.
Moving on to our 3000s policies. We have 3111, 3111, designation of a new position. Employment of instructional staff, 3120. That is coded a2, which again means required staff to complete sections. Let's look at the ones that we chose there, just for the board certification. Employment of instructional staff, 3120.
And the SBA?
The SBA is...
Thank you.
You got it?
Yep, thanks.
So those are the sections, persons ineligible for education certification or employment. And this is statutory. Were there other sections that were selectable? Alternative certification, staff chose not to opt for the checkbox under alternative certification. So been staff-reviewed and staff is comfortable with this, if the board is.
And we are moving from, and this is probably a statute, but item D on page 112, "The district shall issue an adjunct teaching certificate to any applicant who fulfills the requirements." So where we used to say the district may, it now says the district shall. So we will be required to do adjunct teaching certificates in the event that somebody meets the requirements of statute 1012.57.
I think that makes total sense.
Yep.
Okay.
3120, employment of instructional staff. I think that's the one I just talked about. Sorry. 3121.01, background screening, routine. 31, 3210, standards of ethical conduct. 3220, evaluation of instructional personnel. 3242, professional learning. 3420.03, drop or deferred retirement. 3430.03, sick leave, had selections for staff to select. Staff was happy with the selections. And we've already gone over that in legal as well.
Yep.
That was also the companion to 1430, which we have already reviewed. 3700, teacher's bill of rights, and that is a new statute and new policy. So that's one that staff has reviewed and is comfortable accepting. And there it is up on the screen. Then, moving on to the 4000s. 4111, designation of a new position. Many of these are gonna be parallel, because the 4000s are parallels to the 3000s. 4111, designation of a new position. 4120, employment of support staff. 4121.01, background screening, again, as it applies to support staff. 4210, standards of ethical conduct. 4420.02, lump sum payment of vacation time. 4420.03, drop or deferred retirement. And 4430.03, sick leave, which is a new policy under the codes. And again, each reviewed by staff and similarities to the same that we had for instructional staff.
Okay.
Attorney Powers, I have a question, just, and...
Yes, ma'am.
...back just, just a little bit. On SBA 130, when we're talking about the teacher's bill of rights, does it include anything about being recorded with Apple Watches and little devices that students bring into the classroom? Is there any protection for our teachers that they have to be notified if they're going to be videoed?
There is, but it would be outside of the, outside of the teacher's bill of rights.
Okay.
So Florida is a, is a two-party consent state, so it requires that if someone is going to be audio-recorded, that both parties to the conversation be aware of it, unless it is something which is occurring, you know, blatantly in public where everyone would have, you know, no reasonable expectation of privacy. So we also have policies on point which prohibit recording devices within the classroom, so students couldn't just be, you know, using that. If they did, they'd be violating policy, just like if someone were to be recording a private conversation, it would also be a violation of not only policy, but a felony violation of the law. So that being the case, there are already protections in place in our collective bargaining agreement, which also state that teachers are not to be recorded or monitored within the classroom outside of specific assessments to which they are, you know, privy and they're, they're aware of. So there won't be any routine monitoring or posting within the classroom of recorded, of recordings by the district. As to student recordings of it, if a student were to record a teacher, just for exact, for, for example, even if the student were to record another student... even if the student were to record another student, it is a violation of district policy. Not necessarily a violation of the law unless it were audio-recording. It's under federal wiretap statutes. However, video-recording in public is fine. In a classroom, it's not. And we have codes and policies in place that are set to prohibit that. Can we do it effectively? That's a question which probably most of us would know. It is difficult to do so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Certainly nothing within teacher's bill of rights would make that less so than all of the ways that we've able to, we're able to do it already.
Okay. Thank you. You good, Vice Chair Comeran?
Yes, I'm good. Thank you so much, Chair.
Moving on to 5,000's. 511.01, the homeless. Homeless students. 5120, student assignments. 5121, controlled open enrollment. That is a three, and I'm just going to take a quick look. Staff again accepted the changes.
5121...
There was some edits.
Yeah, there's...
Looks like there's some edits that did not get selected on this one.
I know. That's what, I was, 5121 has a lot of things that I'm concerned about.
5121?
Yes.
Controlled open enrollment?
Correct.
This was assigned to Ms. Boston Ellis, so I'll need to take a look and coordinate with her on that one.
That's fine. So I guess I have questions regarding, since they didn't select some of the options, I understand that, but the options also are not struck through, so I'm just trying to determine. But really, my questions begin on page SBA 161, specifically under where it says review of applications, because I don't think those are options. I think that's definitely a section. And kind, some of these, I think even the section of lottery, we have to choose something there because that's not an option, I mean, there are options and nothing has been chosen. But specifically on review of applications, nothing has been chosen. It doesn't say how many school days. It doesn't say within a certain number of days. And then as we turn the page again, nothing is chosen, so...
I'm going to check quickly also. It is possible that that one, that sounds like one which may have been assigned to Mr. Ayers, and if it was, I know that Mr. Ayers sent me one directly. It's possible that that is my error, that I did not upload it.
Yes, that definitely sounds like a Mr. Ayers.
There's just a lot...
Expert area.
Like, there's nothing in this policy that we can actually approve. And it's nine pages of a policy, so it's like...
I'll look into that one and bring it back to the board for our second round just to make sure whether what's wasting any time on it now. It does seem familiar.
Yeah, there's nothing chosen in it, so nine pages.
We may have not gotten the updated one, is what I'm thinking.
Right. That's what it looks like.
Okay. Moving on from there, 51... 5136, wireless communication. 5,200, attendance.
Let's pause there, please. Good. Sure. So 5,200, I'm looking at specifically SBA 170. So this is item E. Does statute now require us to say the teacher may as opposed to the teacher shall? That's the change in item E on page 170 in this policy. And if it doesn't say that we have to go to may as an option, we don't need to make this less stringent.
Did we jump over wireless communication devices?
Yes. We did.
Okay.
And do you have questions on that?
No, 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 no. Okay.
Okay. We're now on SBA page 170, and I have the exact same question.
Looking into that.
Bless you. Thank you. Bless you.
The last thing we want to do is to make it less stringent.
Right.
Cheryl. One second. It's 5136?
And unless it's, well, I just...
No.
No. Item E.
Yeah.
Okay. Neala's only notes were that it was a technical correction because it was linked to a statutory citation, and the statutory citation, that was the exact wording used there. Now certainly, we, we can be more restrictive and say shall.
Please.
Can we be more restrictive than statute?
In this case, yes, yes. Because where we can't be more restrictive is where we have something that is specifically controlled by the legislature only. This gives us the ability to, we can require that a teacher do so. The question is, do you want that requirement?
I, I do, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, no, please.
I don't disagree that I want them to do it, but I'm just, is that not something that the union would be interested in, that we make this requirement of teachers? And is it more of a procedural item than a policy? Because what is the consequence if a teacher does not? And do we want to put into policy punitive language that's essentially saying, teacher shall, they have to when a child is at? I mean, I agree it's best practice. I just would draw hesitation to...
I got a question on that. Was the shall that before?
That's what I'm looking at right now. I mean, just once I...
Yes, there is, yes. It was there before, which is why I assumed it struck.
Yes, and I, and I, sometimes these things just bring to light, you know. That would just be my only concern is, I mean... Many of us have been a teacher, and what's the, what's the consequence if I, if I don't or if I forget or...
I'm sorry.
I think that, yes, I hear what you're saying. I think that this district is experiencing the consequences of not doing that very, very entirely too regularly, and it does reflect back on the teacher because if that student is not attending school regularly, it reflects back on the teacher because it, chances are that student is not going to do well on the assessments. That reflects negatively on the teacher. It creates its own consequence. So to protect our teachers, I feel like our foundation has got to be very firm and very solid for all the reasons that we're talking about. I have a concern of when a student has at least five unexcused absences for which the reasons are unknown within a calendar month. Five absences, and it also says at least, oh, well, now they have, they definitely have five. They've got 10.
May I ask currently, let's say a high school student who may have as many as five different teachers. Is then each teacher, in addition to the fact that the, they keep their attendance logs, and those attendance logs are then reported, is each teacher then, under our current way of doing it, which is the shall, is each teacher then required to be reporting a pattern of non-attendance affirmatively and separately from whatever they turn in in their log? And then do we have, is that then sharing that requirement among five different teachers for that student so that five people all need to be reporting a pattern of non-attendance in addition to the maintenance of their normal attendance logs? They need to separately, each of them needs to inform the principal. Is that what we're doing?
Well...
Well, I would say that for the purposes of secondary where there are six, seven teachers of record, those individual teachers would be reporting non-attendance presumably to discipline if they're seeing consistent non-attendance when they're looking at the rest of that student's attendance record. So daily attendance is not determined by just missing one class in secondary, which is its own issue, which we can cover another time, but I don't know if that answers your question, Attorney Powers, but...
Well, 1,003.23, attendance records and reports, which is not linked directly to this policy, at least I did have to look at it to see if they link it at all. It's, okay, it's linked to the policy. That does require mandatory reporting of attendance. It's just as to that section, the mandatory reporting of attendance that it outlines are keeping records and reporting them internally within the school, not necessarily that when a child has reached more than five that then the teacher also has to separately report that in addition to just daily reporting.
I have a question about that because this seems like an opportunity for technology to help us with our work. In other words, you know, we have an early warning systems, and when a teacher puts in who's absent and who's present, you know, and it's calculating that in the background, then when that student reaches that threshold, it should send a notification to the principal, to the guidance counselor, to the attendance liaison, to the parent, to God, you know, everybody.
Are you saying through Skyward or something?
Canvas.
Canvas?
I don't know how many are using Canvas for attendance, but I mean...
This to me looks like an opportunity for technology because it does look a little antiquated to me that the teacher shall report to the principal, you know, like walk down there and say, this is happening, you know, there, what is the process around that and how do we reduce time on teachers by using technology? There are, parents are already supposedly getting phone calls by 11 o'clock, right, that their student's absent.
Is that something that our technology department can look into?
Yeah, I just made, I just made a note as well because remember we have a new data dashboard where you can see and look at those trends and they're coded and colored with all those maps. So I just need to see how those two pieces are connected right now. But remember that dashboard is new with the early warning indicators.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Taking it the next step, and it makes me think of our student board representatives. You know, they're so smart. They could probably come up with the actual algorithm or whatever you have to do to make it do that. Because I'm also very sensitive to reducing time and workload on teachers, especially if there is a potential punitive element to that that's not already embedded. That's not the purpose of this. This is to literally save our kids.
So for now, do we want to bring this back? Do we want to keep it as shall, or do we want to go to may? That's really the question. And I think I just, for my part, I don't know enough about whose job it is to track things at an individual school level. Does that differ between, say, elementary school and high school? Are there different roles of attendance staff versus teachers? What are the, I don't, I don't know enough about that scenario to tell you, except that you may require that teachers do it, or it can be put aside as a procedure. We can say may here, but those procedures may be more restrictive than that. So that's, that's up to... And this was a staff edit. This is...
I'd love to see shall with then with tight procedures around it, having a look at our attendance needs.
And we're still hoping that this stat, that this item E actually changes, that statute helps us this year even to change some of that language. But for now, with the work that this board has done to try to do anything we can to make it more stringent, I recommend sticking with shall, but again, I don't know how the full board feels about it.
I'm on the shall too.
Okay.
Okay.
So if you're okay with that, Dr. Gullett, let's stick with shall.
We're making that modification now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, I knew we'd have the same question.
Now, 5410, student progression. 5410.01, promotion, acceleration, and placement. And I'll read each one a bit slowly so you can follow along with the SBAs because I don't have the SBAs listed on here. 5420, reporting student progress.
We're up to page 181.
5460, graduation requirements.
Those may change too after this.
Right.
The perpetual process.
I know this one, the way it's written is a little confusing.
The page?
5460, and this is SBA...
Yes, SBA 184. So it says for students entering grade nine before that school year, so I guess that, before last school year. So that's what their requirements are, and then after that, I guess is... I don't know. It's just having all these separate charts, but I guess we are kind of in a mid-range right now because we have students that were entering grade nine last school year and anybody in that subsequent timeframe. There, there's just, you know, there's a lot of things that have been added since beginning in last school year. Now 9/11 instruction happens. There's a communism day, I think.
All this, all this statute driven, correct?
It is. That's what, it's just having all these charts all in the same paragraph. I guess what I'm, what I'm missing, I think, is where it says for students entering grade nine before that school year, they have to do this, but then it doesn't actually say then what SBA 185 is because you have another chart here. Because which, so this is for students that entered grade nine this year. So that's where we don't have that delineation. And honestly, what's in brackets on page 184 usually doesn't make it into policy.
Right, and it will be, that's one of those, the formatting will be changed. We left it there for the purpose, if the board chose to review it, to know when we need to leave it and when not.
Right.
But what's in brackets will not be appearing in the final policy.
So what we have here, again, let's go back to 184. Recipient, or excuse me, receipt of a standard high school diploma requires successful completion of 24 credits, an IB curriculum, ACE, career tech, et cetera. 24 credits shall be distributed as follows. Then we have 24 credits. Then this note will be gone, and then it's another chart of 24 credits. And then it says the financial literacy course consisting of at least one-half credit as an elective shall be offered. And then we take away that next bracket and then beginning, and it adds these courses that have to be done. And then we turn the page and it goes receipt of standard high school diploma requires successful completion of 24 credits. And here's a different chart that has different information in it. And so I just don't know which one we've chosen because there's not like a selection.
Right, so the 24-credit hour chart that is in on page SBA 184, from what I'm hearing you say, it appears that, that it should either be chart one or chart two, not both. And that depends upon whether, according to the brackets, there is a, the district's established completion of health education as a specific additional graduation requirement.
Right, so it feels like that green section shouldn't even be there if that's, if we've chosen not, there wasn't like an X to choose one or the other. But then I don't understand why we have additional charts on 185 and 186 because, I mean, we just continue, we have like four different 24-credit options here, and it doesn't look like we've actually chosen an option. Or maybe...
Well, this is, the first is receipt of a standard high school diploma.
Okay.
And then we need to really pick, I guess, one of those two. Someone need, would need to answer the question of whether we have health education as a specific additional graduation requirement for all students. And then as to the second set of 24 credits there, that's, yeah, it's the same thing. An international baccalaureate, okay, it's the same thing.
It's the same thing. It just adds the personal finding of literacy.
But I am trying to see whether and why that is that way. Whether there is a distinction between them? I do not know. This was reviewed by staff, so I'm not sure why, what, somebody saw something more than I do.
Well, it's just difficult whenever we just have all the information and we're not seeing the non-redlined version because maybe that's what the challenge is for them too. Maybe they didn't realize that all of this information is just going to be in the policy if they don't redline it out. And we just have chart after chart after chart after chart. Unless I'm reading it wrong. Like, I don't, I don't know which one is what we do, so...
We'll hold this one and have staff take a look and view. That's why we set two days, so that's good. That's why we set two days, so that's good.
Okay. Perfect.
Because I agree, it is confusing. And then there's the note at the top of 186. Include the following for district will establish completion of health education as a specific additional graduation requirement for all students. So there appears to be the need to condense some of this somehow.
Right.
Okay. All right. Anything else on this one? We can move along.
Um...
I'm going to look and see if that's how it is in the normal policy because it was a minor update.
Yeah, we're, maybe we have just a moment, we're going to take a look. This was listed in our section as a minor update, so we're trying to find out whether this was one that...
What's the...
Whether this is one that somebody loaded in here and corrected.
Yeah, it's a five.
Hour 5460 doesn't have charts in it.
All right. Yeah, um, yeah, staff needed to choose one of these.
Right.
So something didn't get done.
Because our current, yeah, our current 5460 doesn't have a chart in it at all.
Exactly.
Yep. Okay. So we'll pull this and resubmit it to staff and be back with you on the second day.
Thank you.
Good deal.
Thank you.
5460. 5465, general education, GED tests.
The only question here is it specifically lists in policy who the GED coordinator is, and is that something that we need to do?
Typically, we do not do that and should not do that, so...
So we need to remove all of that part where it's listing name, title, address, telephone number, email address. We just need to, somehow, that's on SBA 191.
I can't imagine that would be required.
Unless it's required by statute. We should do that.
Right. Right. It's a change. So those spaces, so I mean, we probably do need to have the board's GED coordinator maybe contacted for questions, but...
With a phone number.
Yeah, or even that could change, I guess, but maybe on the webs, web link or something?
Yeah, I would say that we leave where it says, "Board's GED coordinator may be contacted for questions about the underage waiver process of approval and denial," and then place an address of 1614 and the telephone number to, what, to the department.
Board.
Yeah.
Because then they could always ask to speak with the GED coordinator.
Right.
Okay.
What's main switchboard number, 671? Is it 7,000?
We'll get that.
5500, I think, is where we left off. 5500, student conduct.
I do have a question on this one. Maybe for some reason this is in statute, but this would be on page four of this policy, so SBA 195. So this is towards the end of the policy, the section that says code of student conduct. The part that is struck through here, "The principal shall notify all school personnel as to their responsibilities regarding incident reporting. The acts which pose a threat to school safety and crimes are properly reported to the principal and that the disposition of the incident is properly documented." Why is that removed? Again, page SBA 195, if you're following along. I just don't know why that part was removed.
This policy is reviewed by Dr. Hembrook, and I'm looking to see where, if there was any recommendation of that removal by Niola.
That was an update.
Sorry.
That was to remove it, it was an update.
Okay. So that was just recommended within the update to remove.
I can find where...
Let's look up the, see if they have an explanation.
Maybe it's codified somewhere else in a different policy, but I don't see why we would want to...
Or a procedure. It's possible that that is also the recommended AP for this section. I'm going to try to find the answer to that.
Maybe it's not the principal that's required, I don't know, but it still seems like it needs to be required by somebody.
And formally, not just procedurally.
Right. That we need to say that this incident is properly documented, and that's our requirement.
We're scanning through number three of five update sections now to... You can picture your own little Microsoft wheel spinning right over here at your legal department. Okay. Very top one.
It says, that's right, right?
Yep, 5500. It says, "This policy is revised to identify and define the acts of misconduct that are required to be reported under the School Environmental Safety Incident Reporting Cesser as required by statutory changes in HB 543." Was that the only option, the only update?
That's the only update.
That's all the top.
That's what they say is the only update, so...
Okay. So let's add that sentence, or that phrase, paragraph. Is it a sentence? It's a sentence back in if y'all, I mean, obviously if the board agrees, but I don't know why we'd want to remove it.
I would say it needs to be in there.
I would say it needs to be in there too because documentation is the bugaboo.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that all school personnel need to understand what their responsibilities are regarding incident reporting. And if they, you know, and acts which pose a threat to school safety and crimes are properly reported to the principal, or to, you know, maybe it's not to the principal.
I think that based on Cesser, it may be that someone else additionally has that responsibility, but there's nothing that I know of that would keep us from requiring that of the principal as well.
Oh, I was going to say, back to the school safety. Page 195.
Got it.
Okay. It's, yeah, right there, those, that sentence.
Would it be helpful to put, or designate, say that principal is out? You know, and, and you don't want...
Designate already is implied.
Okay. Okay. Dr. Gullett has identified that the, what has occurred is it's actually moved.
The school safety piece.
"The principal shall notify all school personnel," is actually now on page 192. So it's in the very beginning of the policy. That's the strike through. It's not a strike through, it's been moved.
Yeah. It doesn't address the zero tolerance piece, which was what I was looking for, but it addresses the school safety piece.
Oh, it's towards the top.
Yes, so it's now the third paragraph in the entire policy as opposed to being buried on page four.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That addresses...
Like, that makes a lot more sense. Like, why in the world are we striking through that? Okay.
Putting it at the beginning where it belongs.
Yes.
Okay, good deal. All right.
Thank you.
All right. What's next? We are on...
5513, air of school property. 5517.01, bullying and harassment. 5610, removal and out-of-school suspension. And by the way, each of these have been, of course, reviewed by staff, so I wouldn't even repeat that for each one. 5710, student and parent complaints, and this was encoded as a number two. So we'll pull it up right now. Again, reviewed by staff and required district staff to select, to make selections. And the, in green, the item that has been added in is that this policy shall be published on the district's website to notify parents of the process herein. Parents shall also be notified of the process herein through the code of student conduct. Our code of student conduct is also published on the district's website, so that's two birds, one stone.
And both of them are only electronic-based, which is potential for concern because we no longer print the code of student conduct at all.
Right.
And the district's website, if electronically are the only ways that parents understand how they can, parents and/or students can have their right to certain grievances, I don't know that...
Copies are made available at schools as needed.
Of the code of student conduct. How was it written before? I'm going to pull that up.
Where's what?
So this sentence, or this paragraph was not included before. This is an addition of information.
What, the policy shall be published? That's new.
5710 is an existing policy, but what has been added is the section in green that is not currently in our policy.
So, yes, I concur that at minimum, this is something that needs to be added. The fact that we do not have a printed version now, as of now, of the code of student conduct or this process may be something that the board and operations want to review because there are other times in which it may be mandated.
Correct.
Or maybe we could say through the code of student conduct, available online or at students, at schools, at the, yeah, I mean, maybe they can print them. Print them at the schools. Somehow, we need to tell people how they can get to the code of student conduct.
Right.
In policy, personally. Because if we're directing them that that's how they can find out their process, we need to tell them how they can then find the document that tells them the process.
And where they can get the document from.
Yes. So, how do we want to word that? Shall be notified of the process herein through the code of student conduct, available electronically or by request?
I, I think leaving it through this code of student conduct as of right now, but I think because however they get a code of student conduct is, is a good thing, but it's published on the district website and the code of student conduct is on the website, so there may be additional, I think you can add comma, available on, I mean, it's kind of circular. Policies shall be published on the district website, and they're also notified of the process through the code of student conduct, which is available through the district website.
But what I'm...
So all roads lead back to go to the district website.
No. What's missing is available at the school site. That's what's missing.
Yes.
So we need to, it, my, this individual board member's opinion is we need to put in policy that code of student conduct, if requested, will be available in print at a school site if somebody needs that because this is a printed policy that...
Printed copies may be requested at any school site during normal business hours.
Something.
Didn't, a few years ago, we used to have to sign them.
Yes.
So that requirement is gone?
Correct.
You acknowledge it in Skyward.
But we don't have to. There's nothing that slaps your hand if you don't.
There was nothing that slapped your hand when you didn't in person either. I mean...
Yeah, there was. There, kids, I remember my kids, like, they would get things sent home all the time if you didn't have your little paper signed off and sent back in. We used to have a much better process.
I will say, as a teacher, I made sure every single child returned theirs.
Regardless of whether they read it, they had to at least sign that they read it.
They signed that they read it.
Right. I remember, I remember that specifically.
I have a question, and this may be more procedural because I do agree with the line of conversation that never do we want a parent to be able to say, "Well, I never saw that. I never agreed with that," or a kid to say the same. That's what the first few days of school are supposed to be about, you know, reviewing, you know, procedures and so on. But again, with technology, for the parents who have shared their phone numbers, email addresses, all of that, is this where, again, technology could help us where an attachment with the code of student conduct could be sent out, you know, at the beginning of the school year as part of a Skylark message, you know? Check your email, and if you have an email on file with us, you now have this, you know, multiple, multimodal ways of delivering the information.
I like that a lot, actually. Because they don't have to hunt for it. It's getting delivered to them.
And that is dated in timestamp that it went through. Now, whether or not that parent or guardian or whoever chose to open it and read it, I mean, good God, where does responsibility end and begin?
Agreed. Agreed. Something that can ensure that it's not just on Skyward.
We hear that a lot, well, it's on the website. Not us specifically, but I've heard that from, you know, sort of as a fallback, well, it's on the website. Well, that's assuming then that everybody goes to the website, and we all know these days, where do people go? For better or worse, to get their information, accurate or inaccurate as it may seem.
Yeah, we need to post it on social media.
Facebook?
Yes.
Instagram.
TikTok. YouTube video.
Not TikTok.
I can't stand TikTok.
TikTok is outlawed in policy.
Yes, I've never been on TikTok. I will never be on it, but that's personal choice.
District devices.
Correct.
Okay. So what are we doing with the code of student conduct? Are we just leaving it? We're not telling them where to...
We've placed one sentence at the end. "This policy shall be published on the district's website to notify parents of the process herein. Parents shall also be notified of the process herein through the code of student conduct. A printed copy of the code of student conduct may be obtained at any school site."
Upon request.
Upon request.
Yes.
Yes.
You okay with that, Dr. Gullett?
Yes.
Okay.
And then as far as the other parts of the discussion, as I said at the beginning, that's probably procedural.
Yes, it's already.
So that requirement that we have for them to sign, that is just on Skyward, correct?
It's an acknowledgement, you check a box.
It's an acknowledgement, but it's not, there's no requirement for, like, it's not like you can't use Skyward to look at the parent portal if you don't do it. There's nothing that...
And I don't even know if in the old days, if you didn't return it signed, if you then had to sit out of recess or something, I don't think that that ever happened. I mean, it may have, but...
I think those teachers that wanted to make sure they had something in their classroom, they made sure that it came back. When you guys are teachers, you all would know.
Would make phone calls.
Well, that's what you do. You call home when you don't get back.
When you don't get that manila envelope with all the pieces of paper, 1900 pages.
Yes, yes, I remember those.
Putting the same exact information on every page.
Yep.
Thank you, Lord, the word, ooh, we just lost our screens. Okay.
All right. Next.
Okay, 5722, school-sponsored publication, and this is coded as a three. Staff has reviewed. That's because you're highlighted, selected on all of them. Yeah. I don't know why it's that way. There we go. Okay, and here were the checkboxes that were chosen, the checkboxes that were dechecked or not chosen are struck in purple. So this is asked to student publications and the publication, or the selections chosen by staff. Staff is comfortable with the changes made, and the board certainly, if they have any questions or discussion. We'll hear that now.
And it kind of marries into what we were just talking about, you know, look at all this multimodal ways of delivery. That's my only comment.
No, I agree with all that staff has chosen.
Anything else from the board? Okay. Oh. What comes?
While I understand where we are, and this is just a general statement, this is just a general statement for me, we can't always just assume that everybody... just a general statement for me, we, we can't always just assume that everybody has access to certain things. When we make that assumption, I think we, there's a group of people that you're gonna always leave out and disenfranchise. Whether it be, we just think that everybody has digital access, they don't, we know they don't. You know, there's folk out in the forest that don't have access to certain things. And I think we can't continue to deal with policy just assuming that everybody has access. Everybody has a computer nowadays. Most of us probably do, but there's a lot, there's a group of people that don't.
And thank you for that, Reverend Cummings. I, I think what the purpose of this is to also include that student publications may be printed, because it lists all kinds of written materials, as well as those in electric, electronic and online form. And so it, it kind of broadens the scope of how student media production can occur, but also what we're monitoring, that they can't just be producing things that nobody's paying attention to. So I think, I think that's the purpose of some of the additions here, because it certainly doesn't exclude the rented, the written pieces, but it now includes the electronic pieces as well. But I understand and concur with your sentiment that just because we do something electronically doesn't necessarily mean we need to stop doing it.
Right.
In other forms.
In lieu of, yeah.
Right. And I, and as I was, kept reading these, I just kept getting that sense that we were like, okay, it's on Skyward, it's, it's on this, it's on that. But we know, we know, everybody doesn't access those.
But, almost everybody has a phone, I will say that. They may not have a computer, but they do-
Right.
-have a phone. Which just, and this is just a general comment to thinking about the discussion that we've had today and being a classroom, just to ensure that there is direction from our staff, that how many resources are available on our website that our students have access to, you know, that it's all there. Just to reiterate that point that we're teaching them where to find it.
Yes, and, and that's a great point, and it brings me back to when we were shut down and, and everything was online, and, and it actually came from a citizen about the Affordable Connectivity Program, and I just checked our website to make sure that it was still on our landing page, which it is. You know, and it's the Federal Communication Commission Affordable Connectivity Program that helps households struggling to pay for internet service. And it's an FCC benefit that Congress created to help ensure that households can afford the broadband they need for work, school, healthcare, and more. So, you know, that's just continuing to share our message, and, and again, that came from a citizen, and it's right there on our landing page. It was put there a couple of years ago and continues to be there. So, especially when kids are in school during the day and they have their Chromebooks, I believe they can access the district website, and they can see all kinds of-
First thing pops up.
Yep.
When they're in school?
When they're in school.
Right.
That's right, and we know that there are places in the outlying areas that don't have good connections, that you have to go down to the end of the dirt road and stand on one leg and hopefully avoid the bears to be able to get a signal. I think you know something about that.
I do, I was just saying, yeah, that's, that's pretty accurate.
There are things out there in Dole. All right. Great point, Board Member Cummings. All right, moving along.
Moving on to five-seven-seven-one, search and seizure, and five-seven-seven-two, weapons. These were reviewed by Mr. McFadden and myself. Five-seven-eight-zero, student parent rights. That was the number two also, so we should go ahead and pull that one up, just so the board can see it.
Which one?
Five-seven-eight-o.
I'm sorry. SBA-two-three-one is where the changes start.
And district staff had to complete sections of this, because each time with student and parental rights, every, I, my best guess is that we will be updating this policy-
Yes.
-in some manner every six months for years.
We skipped five-seven-seven-two?
No, five-seven-seven-two is weapons as they apply to students, and Mr. McFadden and I reviewed that one, and five-seven-seven-one, search and seizure, same thing.
So may I just say that on SBA-two-three-three, I'm ecstatic that we may be putting in policy that students can carry headache medicine.
And also, I think, maybe bronchodilators may be coming down the pike.
Okay, five, if, do we have anything from five-seven-seven, or five-seven-eight-o as to this, other than the comment about medication to relieve headaches? Okay. Six-three-two-o, purchasing and contracting. Six-three-two-o-point-zero-one, vendor preference. Six-three-two-two, construct, I'm sorry, we're moving into the six thousands, I should have said that, so.
We deduce that.
Six-three-two-two, construction, contracting, and bidding. Six-three-two-five, procurement, federal grants and funds. Six-four-four-zero, cooperative purchasing. And all of these in the six thousands so far have all been fives, they are rather routine updates, and in fact, all of the, with the exception of the, the last one, are going to be that way. The last one that I'll call. Six-four-four-zero, cooperative purchasing. Six-four-five-zero, local purchasing. Six-four-eight-zero, expenditures. Six-four-nine-zero, legal services for employees. Six-five-five-zero, travel and expenses. And travel and expenses was one that did have some selection criteria. And you can see those, those are on the screen now. They apparently mostly tend, appear to be in relating to virtual trainings and conferences. Okay. And then, moving on to the seven thousands. Seven-two-one-seven, weapons. Uh, and this is one Dennis McFadden and myself reviewed. There is also a potential late, late coming edit that we will potentially bring up at our next session as well on that one.
Thank you.
Then, I'm just gonna jot that down to ensure that doesn't get mixed. Seven-four-two-one, restrooms and changing facilities, that is under number three. Where? I'm up here. So, seven-four-two-one. Oh, seven-three-one-o, sorry, that's not in my book. Seven-three-one-o, disposition of surplus property.
That's why it was deleted.
Seven-three-one-
Okay.
So, just say it's deleted.
We don't have that policy.
That's, that's been deleted, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we don't have that.
We don't have that one.
If you had it, it, it's been deleted, and it was deleted in my book as well. Purposefully. Can you pull up seven-four-two-one?
So is seven-three-one-o no longer gonna be a policy, or there weren't any changes to it?
No changes.
Okay.
No changes.
All right. Thank you.
Seven-four-two-one, restrooms and changing facilities, and this is a new update, required staff review. Staff has reviewed it. And it was a minor change. Ms. Morant and Ms. Dobbin's reviewed this one. Seven-five-three-oh-point-zero-one, board-owned devices. Reviewed by Mr. Ben Vinudy. Seven-five-four-zero-point-zero-two, web content, apps, and services was a number three, had some changes, and that was also reviewed by Mr. Ben Vinudy, who's satisfied with content now.
And I see where the use of the TikTok platform.
Yeah, this is a, when it comes to anything that is utilizing offshore servers from the United States, it's extremely important, because data, data is, as Mr. Ben Vinudy's put it once to me, is data is generally safe when it's parked somewhere, it's when it's moving that it's a problem. And when it's moving, and it's moving between servers that would be governed by international law and not by the laws of the United States, that's problematic, and TikTok has a fair amount of that, so.
Good, good, good change, reduces our risk, for sure.
Seven-five-four-zero-point-zero-three, student internet and safety and acceptable use policy, reviewed by Mr. Ben Vinudy, who's satisfied with changes.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the last page, last sentence of this policy, which would be SBA-two-nine-one, it says annual approval of policy. By September first of each year, the board shall review and, if necessary, approve any changes to this policy. My question is, will this review count, or will we need to review this one again after this year's legislative session?
As long as we're annually reviewing, once, once a year, because we're supposed to be doing that with acceptable use policies in general, anyway.
Okay.
And that would include, if there's any updates, that this is just one that has to be, you know, reviewed and updated if needed, so. And I will say that, in fact, it's, it's, it is an ongoing process, at any time that can be requested, as a policy review change, an update from Neola, an update from staff, an update from Mr. Ben Vinudy's department, an update from legal.
Thank you.
Jesus Christ.
All right.
Then... Staff technology, staff technology acceptable use, seven-five-four-point, four-oh-point-oh-four, reviewed by Mr. Ben Vinudy. Seven-five-four-four, use of social media. This was a two, which required some choices, Mr. Ben Vinudy has also reviewed. And that concludes our seven thousand policies. And we're prepared to move on to eight thousands, if that's the board's pleasure. Okay. As to the eight thousands, we're beginning with eight-three-zero-five, information security. Eight-three-two-zero, records management. That was reviewed by Ms. Morant, Ms. Boston Ellis. Eight-three-three-zero, student records. Eight-four-zero-five, school safety and security. That was reviewed by Mr. McFadden, who's satisfied as to the changes there. Eight-four-one-zero, critical incident.
Go ahead.
Yes, sorry, I just, I was trying to flip as fast as I could, so this is an eight-page policy. Eighty-four-oh-five, let me see what my note is I made here.
Okay.
Um, on SBA-three-twenty-one specifically, again, anytime we have dates listed here, it, it does mention in green, the initial reporting period for the Florida Model Instrument will be from January first through May thirty-first, and the information will be due by June fifteenth and annually thereafter for the preceding school year. Does it still need to say January first through May thirty-first, even though we won't have this policy approved until well after January first? And, and maybe this is just the statute language that's, the initial reporting period is in that timeframe, but I just was curious if we, since we're putting it into policy, if we say March first to May thirty, because, I mean, by the time we have policies approved, it'll be March.
Right, it, it does need to be, it'll occur during the period, January first to May thirty-first.
Okay.
The data will have been collected, and it'll be, that's a reporting period, but that will be within that timeframe, so.
I just, backdating things always saddens me a little angst, but if that's the reporting period, it's the reporting period.
Yeah, because that, that is the reporting requirement, so it has to be, you know, we will use a snapshot of that timeframe, January the first to May thirty-first, even if that the policy were approved for some reason after May thirty-first, we'd still use a snapshot of that timeframe.
That's fine, I just-
Go ahead.
Because that, that's what statute dictates, is that we look back each year at the preceding year-
Right.
-for that same date and time section.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, then... That was school safety and security. Critical incident response, eight-four-one-zero-point-oh-one, reviewed by Mr. McFadden. Eight-four-one-five, emergency and crisis management. This is our number, this is a number one. So, this one... Was drafted by district staff. Emergency crisis management, eight-four-one-five, and Ms. Morant was the keeper of this policy. So, is this up here?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And this is the policy regarding, if I'm correct, this is the policy regarding our cumbersome nature of making people work from home when we experience an emergency and have to close school, but the students do not need to make up the time. Is that correct?
Well, and how they are paid in the event of an emergency.
The items that we needed to edit gave, came up because of the fact that our intention, the intention of the board was to provide supplemental pay to people who were working in shelter response teams, people who were actually working at the shelters or were on duty doing, you know, generator service, stuff like that, that was specifically related and in support of the storm operations.
I'm thinking of another policy, then, that has to do, that I, that I was wondering, I was gonna ask at the end if it was brought forth or not, because I couldn't find it. So I'll bring that up later, not to detract from this conversation.
This policy referred to there being a, an overtime essentially pay per hour for those employees, based on what their hourly rate would be as calculated, and then also referring to that as a supplement, talked about a supplement being paid. And then, there was some question after one of the storm, as to whether someone was supposed to get both a supplement-
And a-
-and the other, and so, in order to clarify the language, we tried to make sure that our intent was very clear as to what the policy was, so there'd be no question, and no one felt like they didn't get what they were entitled to and received.
That's important. Thank you.
Now, eight-four-two-o, emergency management, viewed by Mr. McFadden.
Yeah, this is the only, this is my last question that I have flagged, and, and it's a, it's just a procedural question, since we're working on this policy. I noted that lists primary emergency response agencies. I tried to look it up last night. What is the status of Dunellen Police Department?
They are still-
They are still going to be a police department, even though they're run by the sheriff's office?
They're not run by the police, they're not run by the-
They're not going to be?
No, they're not, as of now.
Okay.
They're still a separate police-
Okay, that, that was my question. I was trying to find, I know that was the conversation, I know that-
Right.
I'm like, I was trying to find something on it last night. Okay, as long as they're still good, then let's move forward. I just didn't want us to have something in there if it wasn't accurate.
They're still current.
Okay. Well, you're the resident expert on that, so thank you for having that information.
You rejected that, that, that proposal.
Yes, I remember.
Okay.
Okay, moving forward, we have criminal background screening, eight-four-seven-five. Again, only routine changes. Eighty-five-hundred, food service program. Food service program. Eighty-six hundred. Transportation. Ms. Dobbins reviewed this one. It is a number two, so it required some staff selection. That was eight, six, zero, zero. And we've got it up on there as to the, there's some signage issues noticed to the public. Uh, there was also something clarifying, uh, video and images of, as to security regarding infractions and how those can be, how these can be properly utilized. Okay, moving on to eighty-six, ten. Transportation route planning. Eighty-six, sixty.
We're just chuckling.
The word irony just came up.
Eighty-six, sixty. Alternative transporting methods. This is one that required staff selection from number two. This was one, the very first time I did policies, I was kind of amazed. There's all kinds of things where if you've got a student who lives on an island by a boat and all kinds of cool things like that, that's listed in statute. If he lives in the middle of the swamp and how you can pay a, you know, someone to go pole guide him in and all kinds of stuff, it was interesting. I don't know if that's made it all the way to policy, but it's in statute.
They used to come to us in wagons.
That's right. We actually saw the old book that actually said, that's, that they, they paid some local farmer to bring as a, to bring people to school with wagon. In our, in our clerk's book, which we still have under lock and key. Then religious and other ceremonies, that's eighty-eight hundred. That's a five. The American flag, eighty-eight, ten. This may also include the motto, is this one?
It does.
Okay, so this is one that the board asked for us to place on here, for us to discuss. And this would be something that if the board chooses, the board would have to generate specific language the board wishes to place in here. As of now, um, down to display of the official state motto. Currently already, there's tons of, of law on exactly how and when and why and everything we can use the pledge. Then, when it gets down to display of the official motto of the state of Florida, the state of Florida's official motto is the same as that of the United States, which is "In God We Trust." Now, there is currently state law which requires that it shall be displayed in a conspicuous place in all schools in the district and in each building used by the school board. So currently, every school board, every school building and every, um, building owned by the school board is supposed to have, in a conspicuous place, the official motto of the state of Florida somewhere, "In God We Trust." Now, there was some discussion about making that a requirement, that it not just be within all schools, which would suffice by putting it up in, in the office, in the front office, for example, um, or on a posted board sign out somewhere, but that it also be required in every school classroom. And so there had been some community discussion regarding that, and I believe board members had asked for me to, um, flag this policy, no pun intended, flag. Um, but to, to take this policy and bring it for the board to see what our current policy is and to make a determination as to whether there was anything additional that the board may like to, uh, do with this policy as far as the drafting.
Chair, if I can.
Okay.
Um, I know there was a couple of board members who had interest in this, but I was the one who requested it. So I actually have two, two pieces to this. My first starts with the Pledge of Allegiance. And my question would be, is this language that is from statute or not? Because I would like it to say instructional staff members shall lead students in the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, right now, it reads that they're authorized to lead them versus not authorized, but it doesn't dictate that they must. And I don't, I believe that all students should be led by their teacher in the Pledge of Allegiance every single day. We can leave the, most schools do it as a whole group activity, and that's a procedural item that Dr. Gullett handles. But I, I don't love the lack of clarity with just authorizing teachers to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe all teachers should, shall be leading the Pledge of Allegiance every day in their classrooms. So I want to start there for a board discussion and then go beyond, if that's okay.
I got a question, Dr. James. So when you say the teacher should lead it, or if the teacher authorized, what if the teacher says they want a student to lead it?
I think it, I think it just means the teacher's not taking attendance while the.
Correct.
While the kids stand and say the pledge, the teacher is participating, whether she's leading or designate, she or he is leading or designee student, like pledge leader.
Yeah, and if you want to put shall, instructional staff members shall lead students in the Pledge of Allegiance at an appropriate time each school day, or instructional staff or their designee shall lead students in the Pledge of Allegiance. Because they may have a classroom leader who's leading it, and that's fine. But I think that the way it's worded right now does not indicate an absolute requirement of our staff members to participate, and we're all are busy. But there's many a time, and really, I would love for it to say that all staff members must participate no matter where you are, because there are times when the pledge comes over the loudspeaker and people are participating in a variety of activities, and they may not even have a flag in their, in their vision because they are in a hallway or somewhere else. But stopping and acknowledging the Pledge of Allegiance, especially because at probably almost all, if not all of our schools, it's done over the loudspeaker to all classrooms or on the pledge, or on the, um, morning show. It should be a requirement that all of our adults on our campuses are participating in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Well, if we do that, and I understand the reasoning, but if we do that, we're making it more restrictive for the staff than we are for the kids, because below there, it says however no student shall be compelled or required to participate.
Well, 1,003.44 is the statute on point, it probably answers most of those questions. It defers to the school board to have the authority to make rules regarding this. 1,003.44 says each district school board may adopt rules to require in all the schools of the district, programs of patriotic nature to encourage greater respect for the government of the United States and its national anthem and flag, subject always to other existing pertinent laws of the United States or of the state. When the national anthem is displayed, students and all civilians shall stand at attention. Men remove the headdress, except when such headdress is worn for religious purposes. It states what the flag is, and it says it shall be rendered by students standing with the right hand over the heart. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag shall be recited at the beginning of each day in each public elementary, middle, and high school in the state. Each student shall be informed of a written notice published in the student handbook or similar publication. The student has a right not to participate. Upon written request by his or her parent, the student must be excused when reciting the pledge. Um, so it gives pretty great deference to us to be able to choose, but it is, it does say this shall be, it shall be done each day in the state of Florida. Uh, as to who leads it, instructional staff members are authorized to lead, so.
Well, this option meets the law.
How so?
Because it says however no student shall be compelled.
Right, and that's what it says here, is that the, um, in, in the law, that's exactly what the, the law says, is that it says, uh, uh, each student shall be informed by a written notice published in the student handbook that the student has the right not to participate in reciting the pledge. Upon written request by his or her parent, the student may be excused from reciting the pledge.
Which I'm okay with, because they're, they are minor, for the vast majority of them, and their parent has that right to make that distinction. But our employees are our employees and are subject to the policies of our organization. And so I do believe that we have the right, and correct me if I'm wrong, to require all employees to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I, I don't, I don't know how, as an organization, we would.
Does it give this, this employee the option as it does a student?
I don't know that we have to give, do we have to give an employee an option?
I will share, just as a, as a point of clarification. I was in a front office the other day, and the morning show was going on, and the front office staff did not stop. They continued doing their morning work, and I, I really was taken aback because.
It happens every day.
Especially coming from a military family, you just, oh, the pledge starts, everything stops.
Correct.
I just, yes, um, I just think almost, in, in everything that we do, we're setting an example.
Correct.
And so when we are saying the pledge, especially if it's being announced over the loudspeaker, our expectation should be that everyone stops to say the pledge.
And, and so I don't, I don't know, I personally, as a board member, would like to change our policy to reflect that expectation for all of our staff members. I don't want to, if the parents want to submit a request for their child not to participate, that's on them and their particular purview for their minor-aged child. But I don't, I believe that all of our staff members, regardless of whether they're instructional staff or not, because that is a limiting factor, I believe all staff members are to lead students in the Pledge of Allegiance. And because if there are students in the front office checking in, those staff members should be leading students in the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, it's, it's not often that the adults on our campus do not have a student in front of them in some capacity. Um, occasionally, we have clerical staff or office staff that may be in their office individually, but in a vast majority of instances, our staff members are in front of students in some capacity. And so when that Pledge of Allegiance occurs, which by the way, is not always in the morning. So I think that's a point that law says it needs to occur in the morning. Is that what that law said?
No.
Some point throughout the day.
Um, specifically, I think your question is answered by the statute, which again says each district school may adopt rules to require in all the schools of the district, programs of patriotic nature. And I'll, I'll skip forward to where it says, when the national, it's the national anthem, national anthem is played, um, it does require everyone to stop. Uh, but as to pledge allegiance of a, a flag, it says it shall be rendered by students standing with the right hand over the heart. The Pledge of Allegiance shall be recited at the beginning of the day in each public elementary and middle, high school student.
Yeah, I knew I heard the.
But it does not, it does not, upon, let's see. When the pledge is given, unexcused students must show full respect to the flag by standing at attention, men removing their headdresses, except when such headdress is worn for religious purposes. So it does say each district school board may allow any teacher or administrator to read or to post in a public school building or classroom or at any school-related event, any excerpt or portion of the following material. And one of them is the Pledge of Allegiance. So that's authorizing any, this is authorizing any instructional staff member to lead the pledge, even if the pledge hasn't been otherwise.
But as previously stated, our policy can be more restrictive than the, the state statute, which I guess is what I'm asking for at this point. But also, as a point of procedure to Dr. Gullett, I can certainly confirm that this is not occurring at the beginning of the day at every school. I can say that with an absolute certainty. This is occurring at the end of first block at high schools, which is two and a half hours into the school day. So as a point of procedure, if, if it is supposed to be occurring at the beginning of the day, then we need to be clarifying, and maybe as we get into our bell schedule conversation next week, we can talk about what the beginning of the day means, since we will have some formality with that potentially. But it's not occurring at the beginning of the day either. So I guess to the board, are we comfortable with changing it to all staff members? Or all staff members and their, or a designee? If, because if you do want to have a student leader, I just want it, my goal is that it's reflected that all staff members should be participating, the same as the students.
So what happens when, what happens when a staff member don't want to participate? They reverence, they reverence that moment, but they choose not to participate?
I would say that that's a procedural thing that Dr. Gullett would need to address with her procedures and with HR. But if we're going to make a requirement for our students to participate, then that same requirement should be put on our adults. And if, if we want to put in a caveat that the adult has to submit a written statement on their own behalf indicating that because of X, Y, Z reasons they don't want to participate, then that's fine with me.
I can go with that. I can go with that.
That's fine.
Yeah, I just want to compel our staff if they feel uncomfortable for whatever reason.
I feel uncomfortable with that, but I won't digress into that.
The kids have an option.
The kids have an option because they're a minor. The adults are choosing to work in this workplace, which has confinements.
Which is a government organization.
Which is a government organization. So that's where I have a hard time with that, is that the, the adults are choosing to work in this workplace. The children, by means of this being public education, and their parents may be disagreeing, don't have that choice.
So again, this is a government institution that employees have chosen to work in, whose leadership all make an oath on the Constitution of the United States that we will, not that the pledge is encumbered in the Constitution, I'm just saying that this is, by all intents and purposes, is an extension of the government. We are that, and so if we're not.
Well, you also, you also required, if you were a certificated staff, um, I, I remember from when I got my teaching certificate that you had to, you, you had to swear an oath to the Constitution, not only in the United States, but also as to the state of Florida. Um, and as to how, I, I, I think it's easier, and I might just suggest this for us to consider, it's easier to control what people are not permitted to do than to forcibly make someone do something. So, uh, and part of that is the culture. Uh, it needs to be at a, a culture that is expressed by administration at every school, uh, if that's the board's intention and the operation's intention. However, it is far easier to say, you don't have to say the words, you don't have to put your hand over your heart, but you will remain silent, stop what you're doing, and be respectful during the duration of this. And I think that probably solves the problem. As to whether or not the government can force someone to stand up and chant the, you know, National Anthem, uh, or, or, or the pledge, that might be a different question.
I would just argue, though, that what you just dictated was, I'm comfortable with being a procedural thing of Dr. Gullett's department. I think we say that participation in Dr. Gullett's department defines what participation looks like. I don't think we need to put into statute what participation looks like.
Yeah, I agree.
So I think we are, I would like the policy to reflect that it is a requirement of all, everyone on an MCPS campus. I, I think that would encompass it all, but to participate. And then Dr. Gullett procedurally dictates what participation looks like.
I will also refer to our Code of Student Conduct. Code of Student Conduct does say, under student responsibilities, um, says to act in a manner which preserves the dignity of patriotic observations, including standard, um, standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and National Anthem by following the guidelines established by United States Congress in 36 U.S.C. 172. And in accordance with Florida law, the right not to stand for the pledge and National Anthem can be exercised only upon written parental request. It does not, there is not a parallel provision, of course, within the Code of Student Conduct for staff. However, that would, I think, provide somewhat of a framework for the, for procedure, if that's how we choose to move forward with it.
I'll share that, um, personally, when it comes to the, the pledge or, um, you know, the National Anthem, it's a, it's a reflex for me, coming from a military family. That is how I was raised, it's what I believe in, and it's what I do. Rule followers and ability come into play here. Be careful with saying standing for the pledge if you can't stand.
Well, I'm not saying, I, but I, again, I think participation is defined by Dr. Gullett's department. I think what we are, what I'm requesting is that our policy reflects that all individuals will participate in the Pledge of Allegiance. All individuals on MCPS campuses will participate, and we continue the caveat about minors or students. And then participation is defined by Dr. Gullett.
Another consideration for our public school system where everyone is welcome, regardless of their mental or physical handicap. We have fantastic teachers that are tremendous rule followers that want to abide by every single, and they believe in it too. But we have 21-year-olds that come in first thing in the morning with dirty diapers. And they need to be on a changing table, because that's what's best for them as the pledge is being recited. So that para or teacher. So, that para or teacher now has their hands involved. I, I, I just want to put that, offer that out there, because it doesn't mean for a split second that that staff member is not patriotic, and neither is that child. In fact, I would invite any of you to go to Hillcrest School and see how they accommodate for exactly what we're talking about. So, just a couple of points to keep in mind as we navigate through this.
And, and what about the staff member that we have, I guess they're called foreign exchange staff members from other countries?
Oh, our teachers from other countries.
And students that have been here from other countries.
And they're in our country.
And, and then the other caveat I want to add to that is, what happens, because this happened recently, since I've been on the board, what happens when you're at a graduation and the kids choose not to stand up?
But that's the choice as dictated by policy.
They didn't, they did, they did not do a letter, they just chose not to stand up at the graduation.
Again, though, I believe that goes to the procedures in Dr. Gullett's department. We're here to look at the policy.
The policy is supposed to cover everybody and protect everybody, so.
In every situation.
That's, the examples I just cited are, are my struggle, because I would, would not support a staff member being penalized or in any way for putting the immediate needs of a student first.
I don't think anyone is saying that, I'm certainly not. I think that you could dictate while doing other things, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and you could dictate the Pledge of Allegiance while doing other activities.
It's, it really is, it, it sounds like to the best of your ability, is what we're discussing. And this, this is a very, the example you are giving is very specific and very specific to one school.
Well, actually, we have kids all over the district.
Okay, oh, okay, so, um.
Problems. And, and in church, we'll say, stand as you are able, you know, to sing and, and that kind of thing. Sing if you are able. I mean, a nonverbal kid would give anything to be able to sing, I'm sure. So, I don't know, just some considerations, coming from a patriot that works in a public school system, that sees the tremendous spectrum of the people that we serve.
The only small caveat I would add is that, uh, every good law has an exemption, and I think they've struggled with making sure that that's clear for student exemptions as well, probably back before we had to ever think about the fact that sometimes grown adults would also have tendencies to have, you know, opinions on things like whether they would stand for the pledge or do something like that. Um, however, although it is certainly a small minority of the people who would be potentially refusing to stand for the pledge, um, Jehovah's Witnesses, Quakers, there's a number of religious denominations, whose religions forbid them from doing that as well. So, everything, generally, if we select any rule we do, and we have an exemption which allows for such reasonable exemption, it's fine. Sometimes the exemption becomes a matter of swallowing the rule. And so, whenever you start requiring something, you have to find ways that you are also not requiring it. Those can get very large and encompass a lot of discussion.
I, I mean, I could certainly settle with duplicating, changing the language as appropriate, the exemption for students to the adults that are on our campus. That's fine. But I do believe that all instructional staff to the, participate, what was the phrase you used, Lori, Dr., um, Chair Condon?
I think she said, be reverenced in respect to.
Yeah, respect, show respect.
To the, to the time, that time.
No, but you said a phrase.
I don't know what is it.
To cheer thrower, you said a phrase, um, at, at best, um, as best as able, or as.
Stand as you are able.
As, as you are able, participate as you are able.
So, all instructional schools, all instruction, all schools.
Staff.
All staff, not all school site staff, all staff members. Because if I'm Dr. Gullett, and I'm on a campus in the morning and the pledge starts, she's not a school staff member, but she would stop for the pledge, just like, yes. So, all staff members are required to participate, comma, as they are able, comma, in the Pledge of Allegiance at an appropriate time. And I do think at an appropriate time, each school day should reflect what the state law says, which is at the beginning of each school day.
As defined by.
As defined by.
Because, again, we know we've had late buses, it would be nice to have the pledge stated once everybody makes it to school. So, what is the definition of?
That's what I'm following up on.
Yeah, okay.
The late buses, that's.
Well.
You know, again, it's the reality. We say we, in our commitment statement, that we confront reality, and that's the reality currently.
So, all staff members are required to participate, comma, as they are able, comma, in the Pledge of Allegiance at an appropriate time each school day. Right? Is that what we were?
Do we also bring in the fact that they're leading students? Because we've left that part, uh, okay, I can't see that.
I don't necessarily think that they need to lead them, because to, to, to board member Cummings' point, there are teachers who designate students to be leaders of that activity, most frequently in elementary school, probably. But my concern is about staff members participating. It has less to do with whether they're leading their classroom in it or not. Um, now, as the, the instructional leader in their room, I would imagine that students will look to them for that level of leadership, but I'm not hung up on the word lead.
So, it's fascinating to me, in the Neola recommendations or what have you, is we have an option one and an option two. Well, we've clearly done a strike through, through option two, but option two actually says instructional staff members are not authorized to lead students in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah, there are some schools in which they actually do a, 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 a system-wide announcement that is the central structure, that individual teachers are not authorized to lead them. And that's prob, that in, in some cases, I suspect that's because they have become terrified of having individual objections. And, uh, so therefore, it's just handled by a central, a central loudspeaker, if at all. And should be handled as according to one thousand three point forty-four. But one thousand three point forty-four, remember, gives each school board the ability to adopt those rules. And if the school board has chosen simply not to adopt that rule, then it's not going to happen. If a school board has chosen not to adopt a rule requiring, um, the Pledge of Allegiance to be read.
What, what, attorney powers, what kind of case law is out there on this?
As you would suspect, just about with anything dealing with religion and patriotism, it's voluminous. There's a lot. And the case law is pretty well established that, that this is still something that largely is controlled by home rule, so that the school board has plenty of authority to be able to set its policies and procedures for how it believes it wants to do things. However, that is always subject to constitutional individual liberty. So, I think we have had, as a nation now, several years of discussion about whether at a private event, like an NBA game or, or a, or, or an NFL game, at a private event hosted by private entities with people who pay money to get in, um, whether people can kneel for the anthem or not, you know? And that's not even involving a governmental, you know, uh, uh, entity at all. So, discrimination that's, that would otherwise be allowed by, you know, within a private sphere, can't be regulated within a government sphere, sphere. We have to accept that we, as a nation, are a litigious society, and as soon as you tell someone that they can't do something or they must do something, they will, they will very often seek to do the opposite, so.
How would this affect a person's, um, First Amendment right? They say, I have the right to not.
They have a right to choose not to, to participate. And they have a, they do not have a right, and that's why I said, you may choose, it's easier to regulate what somebody must do.
Right.
Than what they, or must not do, than what they must do. So, I, you can't regulate and tell someone they have to stand up and they have to, um, uh, they have to recite, they have to place their hand over their heart or anything like that. You can require that they cease activity.
Right.
And that there be a moment of silence maintained, and that there be, you know, a sort of a general respectfulness shown. That's what you can do.
But again, that's guidance to Dr. Gullett for the procedure tied to what participation looks like. I mean, I think what you just defined is a perfect explanation for what participation means for the staff members on our campus.
And I would, I would hesitate, and I would say that our first sentence here, as we, as you've worked it right now, also leaves another easy out. If people want to read things into it, all staff members are required to participate as they are able in the Pledge of Allegiance at an appropriate time each school day, or at the beginning of the school day. If we say it that way, and someone wishes to challenge, they could simply say, I've already done that, thank you. When I walked in my classroom this morning, I had, I did that quietly and personally at my desk. You don't, you don't get to make me do it again.
And, but I.
It all depends on how much you really want to butt heads over this.
I don't, and I'm not looking to, if, I mean, if that person, take, they can take that up with a big man. Like, I don't, I don't think we need to split hairs about that. I think that we're setting a policy for our district, that our, what our expectation is for your performance at our schools, and how you are modeling behavior for our students each day. And if you want to get into the semantics of that, then that's your prerogative. And again, from a procedural perspective, that would be something that Dr. Gullett can either decide to get in the weeds on or not. I think there, the amount of people who would have that opinion are few and far between. I think, to me, this is more setting the precedent that all of our staff members are going to participate. And when it comes on, and a board member's in the lobby, or anyone is in the lobby, we're going to stop what we're doing, and we're going to find the flag, and we're going to put our hand over our heart, and we're going to recite the Pledge of Allegiance as we are able, or we will simply observe a moment of silence, if that's what participation is defined as by Dr. Gullett and her staff.
So, that, that definition of participation is going to be a procedure?
Yes.
Dr. Gullett.
Yes.
Are you comfortable with that?
I think we need to define what that looks like. Um, if we put something in procedure, I, I made a few notes, I mean, we're talking about all civilians is in, also in the language, so that, to me, means also are we responsible for visitors, mentors, and all of that. But we're going to have to take the, this back and look at this, for, from a procedural standpoint. I, I keep thinking about the word expectation. There's an expectation to pause where possible, where it doesn't do any harm to students, and, but I think we'd have to go back and, and wordsmith that.
I mean.
It's going to take some time, that's not going to happen today.
Yeah, but that's why we have two sessions, right? So, presumably, it could come back for our next session, for us to look at.
Yep, because I certainly support, I certainly support it, um, but again, there's the reality of, of situations. Another thing that comes to mind is a student that's getting off the bus, that's a known runner, you know? You have to have safety first, you know, as, and strange things happen that are true.
So, the second piece to this that I, this policy that I wanted to bring forward was the display of the official motto of the state of Florida. My, right, as the statute states, it's going to just be displayed in all schools and in each building. My request would be that it's, it's displayed in every classroom. So, the state flag, With In God We Trust, is displayed in every classroom. And if there is a donor willing to donate the material, the poster, so at no cost to the district, my request would be that the, the flag with the motto, In God We Trust, is displayed in every classroom. It is, I mean, it's, it's our state flag and our state motto.
I'm good with that.
Not at the replacement of the American flag?
No, no, in addition.
And of course, policy also says that those flags have to be made in the United States. Because that's, I mean, that's also in the same policy, the American flag.
I also, I also love that, but.
The American flag must be made in the United States. That's in policy.
But I think for this, it would not be an actual flag, it would be a poster that would display a picture of the Florida flag with the motto, In God We Trust, on it.
So, that's not.
Well, the official motto of the state of Florida is the same as the official motto of the United States. So, In God We Trust is the same for both. You could have an American flag and a Florida flag.
I just think since this is a caveat of the motto of the state of Florida, I think it would be appropriate for it to be tied to the state flag, because a lot of kids can't even recognize the state flag, if we're being honest. So, having the state flag displayed in every classroom with the motto, which is also the national motto, however it is for the state of Florida, displayed in every classroom.
So, with, I, I definitely, and I've just pulled up the state flag just to see it again, just so I'm looking at it, um, so.
The flag actually has the motto on it.
Exactly.
Yes.
So, would it be possible for us to have policy that says the state flag will be displayed in every classroom, end of story?
I personally, while I agree it does say it on the, on it, I personally would like to see the motto underneath, In God We Trust, as well as the state flag.
And the state flag, there's the.
Because it's not very large on the state flag. And so, if we're looking at, you know, if we're looking at a eight-by-eleven poster above a, a classroom door, the In God We Trust is not incredibly large. But it is not only the motto for the United States, but also for the state of Florida. So, taking it and pulling it down into parentheses underneath the emblem of the state flag. So, just essentially expanding the official motto to expand to every classroom. And procedurally, we will do that by placing a state flag in every classroom.
And, uh, here's my question, as far as the state flag in every classroom, which I support, along with the American flag, I think it's a great teaching tool, I think it's great for recognition, all of that. Is it something that this board, because we're talking a lot of classrooms across the district, is it something that this board is prepared to pay for? Uh, because if we're going to put it in policy, we can't rely on a donor. That's something.
Well, I think initially, to get one into every classroom, we, I mean, we've already indicated that there is someone willing to pay for that.
Pay for the flags?
To pay for the, the posters. So, putting a picture of the Florida flag, not putting a Florida flag itself, putting a picture of the Florida flag with the motto.
I'd rather see the Florida flag myself.
Right. Potentially, two feet by three feet, just like we have here, that the American flag must be two feet by three feet in every classroom.
I could get behind that all day long.
And I don't know that we're already doing that. So, honestly, if this is.
No, we definitely don't have a Florida flag in every classroom.
Well, no, I'm saying even the American flag at that size, in every classroom, two feet by three feet.
Also that part, but.
That's, again, just looking at all the language in green, that we're talking about in this policy. I, I don't know that our flags are that big in our classrooms.
I know they're not that big in some portables, because I've been in them and, you know.
And I don't know that all the flags are made in the United States either.
Oh, I, yeah.
And I don't think that they're all displayed on a staff. I mean, they may simply be displayed on, you know, those little small dowels that go into the wall.
Right, right.
At least, that's what I'm used to.
So, how does statute, the, um, one thousand point zero six subsection two, is this language here in that statute? Does it say that flags must be made in the United States and must be two feet by three? I mean, is that statute language now? I'm on the first page of this policy, sorry, I'm, I'm on.
In accordance with one thousand six, I'll procure it in accordance with one thousand point oh six, section two, which you just pulled up a moment ago, let me. One thousand point oh six, oh, I, I got that wrong, hold on. One thousand point oh six, section two. For some reason, the legislative is blocked, let's take a look. Each public K through twenty institution that is provided or authorized by the Constitution and laws of Florida shall display daily in each classroom the flag of the United States. The flag must be made in the United States, must be at least two feet by three feet, and must be properly displayed, displayed in accordance with Title IV USC. Each educational institution shall acquire the necessary number of flags to implement the provisions of this subsection. The principal, director, or president of educational students shall attempt to require the flags for donations or fundraising for one year prior to securing other funding sources or allocating funds for the purchase of flags. The president of each state university, it doesn't apply to us, um, a flag must be displayed in each classroom pursuant to this subsection. it doesn't apply to us, a flag must be displayed in each classroom pursuant to this subsection no later than August 1st of 2005. So that's, that's currently as it stands with, with US flags. Must be two, three, by three feet, made in the United States, and displayed on a staff and in, and I should say at least two feet by three feet, can be the three by fives or larger, and displayed in accordance with Title IV.
And that is not currently how our current policy reads. So statute says something, our current po, so we have to adopt-
And that's why it's here in A now. Display of the American flag and display, and the flag of the state of Florida. Now, as to the flag of the state of Florida, this still, this, out of doors, it shows American flag and flag of the state of Florida. Indoors, it's just American flag. The question now would be also record, making a requirement that the Florida flag be displayed inside. And if so, is it going, since we haven't even maintained compliance yet with the display of a three to five is what I'm hearing, or sorry, a two by three foot flag, American flag, work on maintaining compliance with that. But then, at least for now, ensuring that within our policy, we have something which requires the display of the Florida flag in all classrooms via even a poster, which then does take care of both, making sure the Florida flag is displayed, and secondly, making sure that In God We Trust is there. Because if it's at least, if, if it's at least the size of an eight by eight by 12 sheet of paper, eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper, you're looking at approximately half inch sized font of the In God We Trust, because it's all around the border of the, of that. So that could be at minimum displayed in every classroom, a color printed flag, or larger. And if the donors, if donors wish to have them printed in a larger size, then we could display them up to whatever operations tells us is a reasonable limit for display size within the classroom. Obviously, you know, flags, flags can get very large. So at, over a certain spot, over a certain size, it may be that the preference is to display not a poster or photo of the flag, but an actual flag. That has the disadvantage of an, an actual flag of the fact that unless it's displayed in the rectangular form, it drapes. And therefore, you can't read motto anymore.
I mean, I, I'm in agreement that I think we should do our, we should make every effort to meet the new state law with regards to the American flag, the size, and being in every classroom. From a financial perspective, I think that is, needs to be a priority. So then my request would be that we say posting, whether that, and we can know that from procedurally, that would be a poster versus an actual flag of the Florida flag. And again, I, I hear you, Attorney Powers. I would like it to have In God We Trust written underneath the flag, showing our motto.
And if we were able to get them printed in poster size, a, a great number of them, then In God We Trust would now be at an, at a size which was sizable. You know, at that point, then In God We Trust is a logo at a poster size. I don't know what standard poster size is, but-
Yeah. I mean, I won't, I'm not going to die on this hill. So whatever the board can agree on.
Font. I mean, you're looking for something like at least one inch font or something, right?
I can-
Yes. The goal is for it to be legible.
I can completely support a poster in every classroom that displays the state of Florida flag in a large enough fashion. I mean, if we're doing a two foot by three foot American flag, then we need to also maybe do just a little bit smaller, but a comparable state flag in a poster format. Completely can support that. And if we need to dictate what that size needs to be, I would ask potentially as we bring this policy back to us, operations to tell us what size would-
Is, if it's possible, maybe Dr. Gullett, I could contact the person, the donor who's interested in funding this and ask them, maybe we could get numbers of classrooms so that we can share that information with them and come forth with a recommendation for the size of the poster at the next policy meeting? Would that be a potential conversation?
We'll need to know the number of classrooms anyway, because it sounds like we're going to have an expense on our hands that we haven't quite encumbered just yet with the cost of American flags. I, I know I was in a classroom last week and the flag on display definitely is not that size. I happened to be there for the pledge, so we'll-
It's a good time to say we welcome donations.
Yes. It's a great time to have this conversation with community.
Have those in our classrooms.
For sure, for sure. Because to get the posters one time is wonderful and appreciated. But we know in the school setting, things get, you know, worn out.
Totally.
And so we'll want to be able to continue to do this. And, you know, we're already getting information on our budget numbers and everything is a priority. This is all great stuff. I, I would choose, if we had to focus on one or the other, definitely choose on making sure that our American flags are the way they need to be and where they need to be across the, the district, which is going to be an expense, you know, for us. And if those, unless those get donated too, which would be awesome, you know? And that's all about the community participation and, and making sure that, you know, that the whole community is prioritizing the education of our children in, in the ways that the vast majority of us want to see. So.
So I would, what I will do on this particular policy is I will, this is as to 8810. What I'm going to do is I'm going to have this one brought back up, I guess, again, at our second session. We have about, looks like about eight or 10 that we'll be bringing up again. And then we'll finalize, and it looks like at this point, we're going to get through everything today except for those. So we'll have additional time to-
If we take about a five to 10 minute break, I think we probably can get through those as well. I, I glanced at them. I only have a couple of questions and we can do that. So we might be able to actually get all, if we just take one more really quick break.
Some of these are going to require additional input from staff now for, for-
Oh, okay.
For day two. But that day two could be quite short, so.
So if needed, we could add what you gave us today to day two. But how about we focus on getting through this list and then we can make the determination-
Yes, ma'am.
On everyone's schedule.
And I should say also, as to this policy that we just dealt with, 8800 and 8810, 8800 was religious and other ceremonies and observances. There was a note from Neola that indicates the revisions to these policies are not the result of changes in law, rather they've been reorganized for consistency. Language from policy 8800 regarding display of the American and state of Florida flags and Pledge of Allegiance has been relocated to policy 8810. The title of policy 8800 was also revised since most patriotic activities are addressed in 8810. It's been further revised to make it consistent with Florida statute 1,000.06. So that wasn't a new law change. That's actually been around since 2004, 2005. But it was now codified within this section of statute, so it didn't get buried in a section that rarely would be, you wouldn't think to go to.
So Attorney Powers?
Yes, ma'am.
That being said, the policy in between these two that we're not touching is 8805. And that's staying the same, which is religious expression in public schools. Just because, like, we're bouncing around. But there is one policy that we currently have in our policies, which is policy 8805, which is titled Religious Expression in Public Schools. So we have changes to religious and other ceremonies and observances, which is eight, 8800. And then we're talking about 8810, but we still have a policy in between there that has a lot of the stuff in there too.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, we're moving on to the 9000s. Policy 9130, Public Complaints. This was Code Five. This was reviewed by staff who recommended no further edits. Public attendance at school events, same thing. 9200, Volunteers. This had additional notes. I'm sorry, I forgot to read you a number. Ms. Brown is pointing out. 9000s, I've read 9130, which is Public Complaints, 9160, which is Public Attendance at School Events, and then now we're on 9200, Volunteers. That did have some selections for staff to make, so I'll bring those up. Most of these had to do with retirees and how we, to clarify things with drop and with people who are retired from the school system, when they can, what they can do. Because before, there was this sort of complex pattern of, I don't know, call FRS and find out what they need to tell you to do, so.
You had to sit out for a year and God forbid you walked, you know, grace the threshold of a school and you're losing-
And then people were routinely not getting answers that they needed and were, we were potentially losing a volunteer workforce that was more than happy to come help participate. So, so this should clarify those items. 9215, Direct Support Organization. Those are Level Five changes again. 9380, Civility Conduct of District Employees. This is as to, this is a Code Three. This is a new one. And this is based on, we, we modeled our Code of, of Civility, which is included also, I believe, in our Code of Student Conduct. So it, it sits there as a code and therefore is incorporated as a board policy. And indicated to the board that what we based that on was the standard policy that Neola has of these items of civility that are, and that we would adopt this also as a policy. So this policy was reviewed by staff. This is actually what our Code of Civility was generated from. And this is relatively standard throughout the state as well. So this was as to policy 9380, Civility Conduct of District Employees. So we've got one in, in Student Code of Conduct, which essentially identifies that all stakeholders should behave in a certain way. And this one is as to the ones that we can actually control. 9700.01, Advertising and Commercial Activities. And then 9800, Charter Schools. And those have also been reviewed by staff.
I'm, I'm sorry, Attorney Powers.
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
The, um, one with the civility.
The one, I didn't hear you.
9380.
9380, Civility Conduct of District Employees.
So the section C.
Which section, okay, abusive, threatening, or obscene email, mail, or voicemail messages?
Yes.
Okay.
That is currently in effect, right?
That is currently in effect.
Are board members considered employees?
I would think so.
Yes.
So this does apply to us?
Yes.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
But it's not currently an approved, like, we're not, it's not a policy yet. We have to approve it. We haven't approved it.
This is within this update, so it's not-
Right. So it's, it's not currently a policy, but it will be.
Right. And this was a recommended policy. It's not one we've created specifically. It's, it's a policy which is going to be replicable throughout the state. It's not reactive. It is proactive. So-
There is no Florida statute attached to this, correct?
Any communication that would occur from the time of adoption of our policy.
He's saying, is there a statute that's driving the development of this policy?
No.
No.
Sorry for being your interpreter.
But there's not to say that once we adopted your policy, we could approach our delegation next year and request that there become statute about it.
Indeed, indeed.
Right.
Okay. Well, that was very efficient.
Okay. Now, we can go back now to, we can go back now to what I've listed on your addendum. And that was the zero policies, but you had something.
Well, there's a policy, there is a policy, I emailed you, we have a policy, or there is state statute, limiting paying, payment to employees when they do not work, which is why we've had this hybrid work situation on the days when we have had to close for hurricanes this year, that are not student makeup days. So I can't remember a time when we had employees work, but students did not come to school due to a hurricane. This is like, kind of a new concept. And so we have limiting statute, and I forwarded the email to you from Ms. Morant a while back. So if you check, it would be in your email there. I had requested that we create policy, if it does not already exist, that allows us the flexibility to pay our employees for not working on days due, closed due to an emergency. Because we have created quite a nightmare on a couple different occasions where school was closed due to a storm. Mr. Ayers Department determined students would not need to make up the minutes, but then our employees still needed to work to get paid. When I do believe that the right thing to do if, is for those employees to get paid, regardless of work, all employees, technical services, all the way to superintendent, because it's due to a natural disaster. And I, right now, my understanding is maybe it's state statute that's limiting that, which if that's the case, I would like to see us develop our own policy to reflect that. And if we do have a policy, then I want it to make sure that it reflects that change.
So you're saying that as of now, there's not a policy that applies to that scenario?
That's the whole reason we've been in the conundrum we've been in this year.
And, and a few years back, because we've had to, they've had to work extra days or-
Yes, last year also.
Yes.
Yeah.
So what's the policy number, Terry? Can you tell us the number?
Compen, uh, what's, 8415. Take a look at this one. Compensation and Reporting of Time District Emergency Management Team.
But it's not people who work the emergency management. It's the non-working, it's the, it's the ability to pay people for not working during an emergency.
Try this. Compensation and Reporting of Time During an Emergency/ Public Health Emergency or Disaster. Take a look at that one. This is separate from those who are working during the disaster.
B, in the event of an-
Shelter.
No, but that's saying that they're directed to work remotely. What we're saying is there needs to be an item that says they don't have to work at all, because it's an emergency.
So can we request that staff draft language that mirrors what you're saying and bring it to us whenever we come again?
Yes. Well, and I thought I had already done that, so I apologize for any miscommunication that occurred there, but-
Okay, right.
Yeah, there was, there was no additional language that was drafted to put in here. So that would be, who, who was with this policy?
Ms. Morant, I know.
Yeah, Ms. Morant. So I'll need her to, to submit what she would think would cure that, and we'll review.
Dr. Gullett?
Thank you. To, to Board Member James' point, I, I've been told by staff that the board policy prohibits that. So I do think it needs to be addressed. I've been looking for where that is, but we will, if we could bring that back, I think that would be really important, have that conversation.
This is 8415, and that would be under the section that says Compensation and Reporting of Time During an Emergency, Public Health Emergency or Disaster. The item that you're bringing up may be potentially solved by adding another-
Yes.
Item under A through H, adding another item, I.
Well, and I could also argue, though, that I don't even know why, if, if the event of an impending or declared emergency, I don't, I'm, I'm wondering why we have B, C. Like, if we're having an emergency and the students, the caveat is the students not needing direct instruction. If the students do not need direct instruction, I'm not sure why we're making the adults in the event of an emergency work. And it's put our, it's put our entire leadership in quite a conundrum on a variety of occasions and really put employees in quite a pickle as to how they're going to supervise their own children. As somebody who had to supervise a one and two-year-old when COVID started while still being an employee of American High School Public Schools, it's, it's challenging at best. And so I just think Ms. Morant's, and I know Ms. Morant wants to improve this, so maybe just bringing it back to her so we can see it in a couple weeks would be great.
Yes, that would be my preference, because it's a lot to work with and we want to make sure that whatever we do, we get it right and we give it its proper attention.
And maybe we can have a smooth hurricane season this year.
Or weather impact day.
Yes.
It's possible.
We had a weather impact day recently, so.
Yes.
What did you say?
We had a weather impact.
We had a weather impact day. That wasn't a hurricane.
Yes, we did.
Right. That's correct. It was wind. Okay. All right. So it's decision time, because it is 12:32. And if we took a quick five-minute break, we could jump back with the, the bylaws section and hopefully get through them. I think I heard that at least one board member needs to be out of here by 1:30. I'm feeling like we- least one board member needs to be out of here by one-thirty. I'm feeling like with this productive and as well as this has gone so far this morning, to get through three-hundred odd pages, that we could probably knock this out before one-thirty.
Yes.
Are we in agreement?
Agreed.
Okay. So let's take a very short break at twelve-thirty-three, and we will reconvene very shortly.
Now I'm completely distracted.
We are back from our brief recess at twelve-forty-one and getting to the tail end of our policies review for this morning. Attorney Powers.
Yes, ma'am. The remainder of what we have here are specifically within the addendum packet that I gave you here. And I will start with, these are the zero-zero-zero sections. These are board bylaws. We also have a few that are in the addendum packet that are from the two thousands. So, starting with, the first two are both Edit Codes Five, Standard Updates, Standards of Ethical Conduct, zero-one-two-four, and zero-one-four-one-point-two, Conflict of Interest. And these belong entirely to the board here. So these are, I mean, all policies technically belong to the board, but this is ones that would require your review if there's any action to be taken beyond these.
And Attorney Powers, I don't see any edits at all being made to the conflict of interest policies. Is there something I'm missing?
It was, it's a, it's a citation.
Oh, okay. So if that's the only change that's, um, lining.
And I reviewed that to make sure that there's, so.
Okay. All good.
And then the next one, I see a student representative to the board.
Student representative to the board is zero-one-four-one-point-four. If you recall, during discussions some time ago, we actually had made the standardized policy, got board interaction and board consensus as to what that would be. And we had a model policy, I believe it was from Martin County, which didn't quite suit our needs, but we then had board discussion on it. I went back through and reviewed from board discussion along with a staff representative to go through and make sure that the board's wishes were represented in that. Then it went to Mr. Frazier, who reviewed from the staff end, making sure that everything was met. I think both of us together managed to figure out exactly how the board wished for this policy to be. And then we were just waiting for our next set of updates in order to actually codify it in statute. And in the meantime, we were proceeding forward with sort of a test pattern for our student representatives to date. So this is the final language that the board, and then board chair at the time, who's now the board liaison to the student representative, had selected. But this represented input from all board members as to each of these sections. And I won't reread it to you, but basically, since this is a new policy, I can indicate that everybody that was here at the time this was brought up, we, this, as best I can tell from going back and cutting and, and looking at the video of everything everybody's input was, this adequately reflects that.
Okay. Anything from the board, or Dr. Gullett on this one?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. I was just underlining all public school board meetings. And because meetings is lowercase, I think it could be inclusive of work sessions. So it's not to confuse student representatives not being here, because it's not, it's not uppercase as a, as an official school board meeting. But a work session is a form of a meeting of the school board. So that would just be my.
Capital M?
Right. Just to delineate if that's the board's desire, so that student representatives would be expected to, for example, sit here today.
That one instance.
Right. They need to be in school.
It's a meeting of the school board today, so.
We don't want to violate our own attendance clause.
Is that one instance of the, of the word meetings, the only instance? That's the only one I see?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Fixed.
Great. Thank you.
Good catch. Yes.
Yep.
As to zero-one-four-two-point-three, orientation.
Um, yes, I have a question on this one. At the bottom of page zero-zero-nine, I think there's just a, a word that potentially is not supposed to be here. So, it says during the orientation program, each board, each new board member shall be invited to meet with the superintendent, members of superintendent's cabinet, to discuss the superintendent's, attorney's, district functions.
Uh, yeah, superintendents and attorneys. Um, no, I think, there was an intention to ensure that as an orientation, they met with superintendent, superintendent's cabinet, and the attorney to discuss the functions, policies, and procedures. So I think this may have just ended up in the wrong place.
And it would need to say board attorneys?
Yep. So.
Do a comma there somehow.
Well, let's figure out where it flows best. During the orientation program, each new board member shall be invited to meet with the superintendent.
The board attorneys?
Comma, the board attorney, comma, and members of the superintendent's cabinet. Or perhaps they're going to meet with the superintendent and superintendent's cabinet together. So.
Who's going to go first?
We can put me first or last. Uh, doesn't matter. Put me last. Superintendent, comma, members of superintendent's cabinet, comma, and.
School board attorney.
The school board attorney.
To discuss functions.
Functions, policies.
To discuss and delete the word, the superintendent's district, or to, to discuss, leave that, then the superintendent, delete the superintendent's and attorneys.
Yes.
To discuss district functions, policies, and procedures.
Budget.
Budget, curriculum, information technology.
Strategic plan.
Yep.
Board policies and district. Okay, so that's it.
Good.
Good catch.
Okay.
Okay, and next would be zero-one-four-four, term. This is just statutory updates.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, that's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Okay. Zero-one-four-seven-point-one, travel and expenses. This required input, which Ms. Boston Ellis and her staff provided, on zero-one-four-seven-point-one, travel and expenses. And you can see there what was, what were the changes. Additions and deletions and the selection of option two. Expenses for participation in virtual trainings and conferences that exceed five-hundred dollars require prior approval by the board. Next, for zero-one-five-one, the organizational meeting.
Um, I do have a question about this one also, because on the second page of this, it does mention appointments. There aren't any selections there, including not a selection for the value adjustment board. So I think at our organizational meeting, I think we did do the appointment of the value adjustment board for sure. But the appointments that the chair is appointing board members to organizations and committees doesn't happen at the organizational meeting, because oftentimes that person has just been named chair, and they haven't had a chance to, so I don't, we, and, and I think that our other policy did say that it wasn't an appointment, that we were actually discussing it among all of us, and we weren't, the chair was no longer making those appointments. So maybe that's why this isn't checked.
Where yet, where yet, Allison?
I'm sorry. It's SBA zero-one-six, so this is the second page of policy zero-one-five-one, organizational meeting.
Gotcha.
It's under appointments.
And, and you'll see that these are unchecked, because these are ones which required the board to discuss and make selections.
Okay.
So.
Look what they are.
Appointments to be made at the organizational meeting shall be addressed as follows. And you see each of those checkboxes, and you'll need to decide what is it that you want checked there.
I like three.
That is, the board will reach a consensus and the selection of members as may be necessary to the various organizations, committees. I'm sorry, you're talking about option three.
I like option three. I wonder if it needs to occur during the organizational meeting. And so that, I know that this policy is specific to organizational meeting. I'm just thinking, that has potential to take another, you know, five, 10 minutes, depending on the list that we have. I don't know what we have right now.
And if I can offer, I don't, unless I missed it, I don't think we've publicly discussed committee assignments this, since chair thrower has been chair.
Correct.
Right. And a lot of times that occurs because no board member has said, hey, you know, I need to not do this, you know. Everybody is, seems to be pretty happy doing what they're doing.
Yeah, I just wouldn't want to put into policy a constraint that the current chair doesn't feel is completely necessary, seeing as we didn't do it, right? I mean, I just would, I would hate to put into policy that we have to do something that we feel like is unnecessary.
Yes. So then, therefore, because I, personally, I would like any board member to feel at any time during their board comments, for example, to say, you know, I would love to serve on this board, or I have an interest in serving on a board that maybe we haven't served on before.
Well, like facilities and then the student liaison. I mean, those are both things that got brought up in comments.
Yes. So maybe four then would be the better fit, if we quickly look at that. The board members shall discuss the need or necessity for board members to participate in various organizations, committees, and/or councils, as may be required by law or board policy, or as desired by the board, and determine appropriate representative. And to me.
I think that would give you the most flexibility.
Yes, that can occur at any time, and anybody can bring it up.
I think, and then if the chair deems the necessity to have a real conversation about it, then the chair does have that discretion to bring it up in a meeting.
Right. Anytime.
Or.
Yes.
Sorry, I thought Aris was gonna say.
That's okay.
But perhaps putting it in the policy in the organizational meeting will at least alert us that during the organizational meeting, whenever people are. alert us that during the organizational meeting, whenever people are gathering all the things we have to do for that, that current list.
We need to initiate the conversation.
Right, the current list of all of our committees, or if there's a new committee that the team knows has come up that we need, then we can at least receive a list of that during the organizational meeting.
Especially, because too, I'm just talking through this, chair thrower, at your organizational meeting where you were named chair, there were no new members to the board. So keeping it the same wouldn't, wouldn't be harmful, because there were no new, there were no additions or subtractions. But in an election year, there could potentially be additions or subtractions, which would then create vacancies of some kind, because if there's a subtraction, there obviously will have to be a discussion about assignments.
Right. Especially with term limits.
Yes.
So there will be more changeover now than, in, in the future than there ever has been.
I think getting the list at the organizational meeting, including whatever would be vacant, because we would know who's being sworn in. And at least us taking it back, reviewing it, and it being brought up in a future comments at the discretion of the chair is more than appropriate.
Agreed.
Agreed as well. And I really like the board members, you know, to feel very empowered, because we all, if this board has demonstrated one thing, it's demonstrated of a deep bench of strengths, talents, and abilities. And that's nothing I would ever want to squelch, you know, as chair, like saying, oh, you have to do this, when it may not line up with the passion, or the talent, or the ability.
How do you like the language for value adjustment board?
Pardon?
For value adjustment board.
We did that.
The language there is good.
The organizational meeting.
Yes. Yes, that was part of it. And let's see, the board shall elect one member to serve on the value adjustment board. That's currently me. It's been me for a while. Board went one citizen member, and yep, and that's Dr. Gwendolyn Dawson, and she agreed to continue to serve. I talk to her regularly.
So I do have a question about the way this is worded, though. I, yes, she's a wonderful citizen representative, but does she own a business occupying commercial space?
She does.
Okay. In addition to her. Perfect. Thank you for that clarification, because I've never read that line in that policy.
Yep.
Good deal.
I sustain. Okay.
Okay, moving on to 0153, appointees. It says deleted, so this is the one, this policy was removed. By Niola. 1111, designation of a new position. Oh, sorry, we've, that's in the 1000s, so we're done with those. So we now have four more of the 2000s that are also in your, in your addendum packet, starting with 2215, program of instruction. You want to bring that up on the screen for?
This is all statute.
I think this is all statute-driven, right?
And every one of these is statute-driven, it's all a number five.
Okay.
So unless you see anything in 2215, the next is. 2270, religion in the curriculum. And this is where there's specific instruction regarding comparative religions, for example, and how it's to be carried out. Essentially, these are in keeping with current constitutional law and policy, which indicates what we do for the development of any program, which is going to have, it's a course of its study or an actual instruction, which concerns comparative religions, for example.
And Attorney Powers, there is a selection option, but we don't have a choice that's been made by staff.
That's correct. So this, this needs to go to staff to determine whether we're going to check the shall be developed to include or may include. Frankly, may include means, it presumes that it will be there. And the curriculum shall be developed to include means kind of the same thing. The way this is worded is a little bad, because an understanding of religions and their effects on civilization, go back up. Is essential to thorough education of young people and their appreciation of a pluralistic society. To that end, the curriculum shall be developed to include, or may include, and then it goes into that section. So either way, I think it's really saying the same thing. One is giving you an option to do it this way or not. And if you're going to have a policy, I think you need to go ahead and have. A shall, that it would be directed, that this is gonna, not, not you can do it any way you want to.
Right, otherwise, why have a policy?
But that, that's my, from a legal perspective, and it may be that through curriculum instruction, they have some differing view, but I'll, I'll leave that within the superintendent's discretion as to whether she wants to move forward with a shall, or.
Shall.
It shall.
Unanimous, that's an easy one.
There we go.
We shall move forward, it's unanimous.
We shall.
Okay.
Okay. And the next one would be 2271, and that is articulation and access to Florida College. This is a five, this was also, also reviewed and approved, so.
Thank you.
This is three. 2371.
Oh, boy. This isn't even one anymore.
And this is as to hope scholarship.
We may be having to look at this again in a few weeks.
I know. The governor hasn't signed that into, but there is a repeal currently underway.
You're talking about 22, 2371?
Yes.
Yeah, the hope scholarships.
Hope scholarships currently in legislation.
So yeah, this is, this is the current recommendation.
Sure.
But, you know, this may be something that later is going to require, we can't really wait on it, so.
Sure.
Now, we can, if, before it's actually adopted, because we still have one more work session.
Right.
And then we have the actual school board meeting in which we adopt it. If before it's adopted, there is a sudden requirement of a change, then we'll need to discuss that.
Okay. Because in general, things like this take place starting July 1.
Yeah, so I, it's very unlikely that we'll.
Yeah, I think you might want to dog ear this one. I get the feeling we'll be hearing a lot more about it.
Right.
Just a hunch. All right.
We'll bring that one back, just to make sure this is number two, what's this, 2371?
Yes.
Okay, so for you, if you would check your lists of ones we're bringing back, I will make sure that they match mine. Did we deal with, okay. Policy 1120, I'll be bringing back. And that was, I just want to read them off, so I know exactly.
Can Terry, far back up, just send the email to ones?
Yes. 1120, employment of administrators, there was a question. Then 2623, this is the one that I need to check with Mr. Ayers to find out about. 5121. Hope scholarship, we're bringing back, right, I put it out of order. Then 5121, which is controlled open enrollment. 5460, which is graduation requirements. 5465, GED tests. Again, just awaiting a little bit of staff input on those. 7217. 8415, emergency and crisis management. 8810, that's the American flag and motto. And that's it. So those are the ones that I have listed that we'll be bringing back for our second day. On that section, I would, I would suspect that most of those, I've got the questions that we'll need answers to, we'll get input from staff, we'll put them back up right as we did this time, and we fly through them relatively quickly. And anything that might have an unanswered question, or anything that might require additional board discussion, we'll do one that day. But knock on wood, it appears it might be relatively quick day that day.
Great, great. Board member Campbell?
Sure, sorry, did we resolve the question on the interscholastic athletics? Maybe we did.
We did, because we removed that junior high, middle. We removed the, and that just said all.
Said interscholastic athletics.
Interscholastic athletics.
Okay. Well, if that concludes your policy review updates, unless you have anything else from legal, we'll give you the first crack at commenting today.
Just public comment.
Okay. All right, any public comment? Seeing and hearing none. Anything else from legal?
I would just like to say, board, as you know, several years ago, we began the process. This has been, throughout the entire duration of my being here, we have always been involved in policy updates and in policy formation. And I know that that's something I've enjoyed doing with each of you as board members and also with the superintendent and her staff. But it has been a lot of work. And everyone knows when it comes to policy stuff, we have to keep our regular tabs and then the ones that need to be brought up over time. It is an honor and a pleasure working with everyone to do that. And I have to say, when it comes down to updates, or when it comes down to policy development, it is, it is sometimes very difficult of a process, because many of these things do require a lot of discussion, and we have to streamline that as best we can. So I very much thank all of you today for, this is pretty impressive, we got through a lot more. And hopefully, some of that had to do with our organization, but it certainly also had to do with the board getting comfortable in streamlining the process and discussing things with one another at our meetings, and also being prepared when we got here. So thank you so much, and that's all I have.
Great, and, and thank you both very much for your attention to detail, your professionalism, your willingness to answer all of our questions that usually come in bursts, and just guiding us through this, this process. It's a, it's a good feeling to be starting to at least pull up even, if not a little bit ahead of this perpetual process.
I, I should really add also that, that a lot of what makes my end of this look good, I had nothing to do with. Getting these books all pulled together, printed up with all the policies, and coordinating every one of those staff edits that are literally handwritten out, so that we can get them into a central book for me to review again and for us to meet with. That's Ms. Brown, she's been doing this for a long time now. She is very efficient at it, and I can say that my efficiency does not match hers when it comes to being able to, to get all this stuff together. So if it weren't for, for her efforts, we'd be working at probably half the speed or less than what we do today. So thanks very much to her, because this is a, this is definitely an, an effort that is greatly improved by, by her skill at it.
Absolutely, and thank you for being part of the dream team. Ms. Brown, you are truly appreciated. You bet. It's a team effort. All right, Mr. Davis, anything from your seat?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Nice to have you with us today. Dr. Gullett?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Board member James?
Okay, well, I wanted to just take a brief minute to provide an update. I would have to ask Ms. Martinez to go back, but there was a time, probably a year ago or more now, where I brought forth to the board a concern I had about the lack of playgrounds on our elementary school campuses. You guys may recall that conversation. We've dug into our facility budget and, and have really, we have pressing needs, air conditioning, roofs, and so playgrounds have not been at the tippy-top of our priority list for those reasons, because keeping kids in conditioned air and all of those kinds of things takes precedent. And I felt, as an early childhood practitioner in the field, obviously, I own an early childhood educational institution myself, I believe, and I'm very passionate about play. And so I have spent the better part of the last year working on how I could, as a private citizen, work to develop a way that we can make this happen on our school campuses. So I have spent some time working with the Public Ed Foundation, and they're going to be the 50123 nonprofit organization that will hold the funds for the Pennies for Playgrounds project. The Pennies for Playground project is going to be a committee-based fundraising program that's going to go out into the community and raise funds with myself and other committee individuals to donate to Pennies for Playgrounds, which would then pay for all costs associated with installing playgrounds on our school campuses. So very recently, the hospital district, I met with them last week. They, a donor connected me with the hospital district and they requested a meeting with me. And I met with them to discuss the needs and the focus of the project. And they brought forth their request to the board for a pledge of $120,000. $60,000 was approved in the meeting. And Bellevue Santos Elementary is, Ms. Dobbins' department has spent time creating a hierarchy of needs of sorts for where, what the most pressing schools would be. And Bellevue Santos has no playgrounds as it exists right now, not a single piece of playground equipment, other than a fixed playground equipment. The teachers have done their best and the principal to meet the students' needs, but there is no fixed playground equipment. So Bellevue Santos Elementary will be the first to receive that donated funds from the hospital district. And then I will continue to work with the committee to fundraise throughout our community to meet this need, donors donating to Pennies for Playgrounds, and then Pennies for Playgrounds paying for those playgrounds through our facilities department.
That is wonderful. Absolutely wonderful, and just like I was saying before, the needs, the passions, the talents and the abilities of this board, I, I just continue to be in awe and am so thankful. I'd love to see that prioritized list of schools. I think that all of us, in our own ways, could then help support this vision, so thank you so much.
And I'll answer any questions any board members have. Honestly, this is something that is just kind of a passion project for me, that I didn't, I didn't want to publicly put my name and attach myself to it, because I just think it's something that I'm passionate about and I want to do in the quiet parts of my life. But I acknowledge that there's discussion about it in the community, and so I wanted to just kind of address it publicly as well. But if anyone has questions about the project, I'm more than willing to discuss it at this time or at another time, but.
Great. Any, any questions from the other board members?
Okay. Well, that was the only comment I had for today. I appreciate our swift work and the preparation that went into the meeting. This was a, coming in as a new board member last year when we did this, this felt much more swift than last year, but it was very daunting last year as well, so, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Board member Cummings?
Thank you. To our legal department, once again, tremendous job. I've been here a few times with this, and it's gotten better and better every time. So as you said, Dr. James, and, and Dr. Campbell, the other year, before they got on the board, it was really a big, big process and took us weeks and weeks to get through it. So Terry and Attorney Powers, thank you for helping to streamline this. This was much better, much, much better than before. And Dr. James, I commend you on the passion that you have for the Pennies for Playground and whatever I can do to help. Definitely make sure that we, because it is important for these kids to have some opportunities to recreate and play as part of the, that's a part of the educational process, so it's been a good morning.
I wanted to add one more thing I forgot. I wanted to thank Dr. Campbell for her extensive preparation. She's our resident policy expert, I, at least I call her that. And so I believe that we were most prepared for today because of the homework that Dr. Campbell has done to prepare for this meeting. She did far more homework than I did, I will admit that. And she really does study policy. I think we all look to her to give us clarification on a lot of items, so.
That is definitely her wheelhouse, so.
So I just, I wanted to say that earlier, so I, I wanted to thank you for letting me interrupt you.
We appreciate it.
Awesome. Thank you. But Chair Comrade?
Good afternoon, everyone. I too have several of the same thank yous. Legal department, thank you. It's definitely, from coming on the board last year, it was a little bit of a painful process to start out of when you, when you joined the board, but it really went very smoothly today. And so thank you for your work and preparation in preparing all of this for us today. And also, Dr. Campbell, I too thank you for your expertise in this area and helping us streamline the process and get through it, so thank you so much. So thank you so much. Also, Dr. Gullett, thank you for, and your team for allowing me to attend the leadership portion of it last Friday. It was at, a part of it was at Hillcrest School, and it really was just an amazing presentation. And I wish that the whole community could hear what all is going on at that school, all the wonderful things, the wonderful people, the students, the partnerships. It really was a wonderful experience and very eye-opening. There was a lot, even being a part of the system here in Marion County for many, many years, there were so many things that I, I didn't know. I was frantically trying to take notes because there was just so much new information. It was very inspiring. So thank you for allowing me to be part of that.
That concludes your remarks. That's it. Okay. Thank you. Board Member Campbell?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome, whatever, whatever. You guys know this is my wheelhouse and this is where I am. I want to obviously say thank you to the legal staff and specifically to Terry. I'm glad that I made a phone call to you guys and you said, send us an email so we can go ahead and start answering your questions. So part of the reason was because I had questions over the first 150 or 200 pages and they already answered them all, and so we, that was part of the efficiency. So thanks, Terry. I know that this is a lot, and you were great at answering my questions as always, so thank you on that. And love the Pennies for Playgrounds idea. I love passion projects. And honestly, I'm just sitting here thinking, that's how I feel about youth philanthropy in action. That has become the Adam Hansen Youth Philanthropy in Action because of a donor, and it now is continuing on. And so I, I love passion projects, and I love whenever they impact our students and they impact our schools, and I think that's going to be great, what we see, the fruits of the labor that you're working on. So that's amazing. Want to give just a quick shout out, I've done a lot of sporting events lately. I already do not have late nights, but we were at, for Osceola Boys Basketball played at Fort McCoy last night, and boy, does Fort McCoy have a great gymnasium. They have a great gymnasium. And obviously, Osceola doesn't have one right now, so it was really like, but they need bleachers. So, I mean, they have to pull out chairs and all, and bleachers are about $50,000. So, I mean, that's obviously not high on a priority list when we're talking roofs and air conditioning and all the things, but man, they have a great gymnasium.
Bucks for bleachers.
There you go. Bucks for bleachers. And Dr. All Day's doing a great job out there. We had seen her quite a bit before she moved into that role, and so it was just good to see her and her team and just a good little community out there supporting their team. And then tonight, I want to say, while there's a makeup basketball game also happening at Bellevue, Bellevue Boys Soccer Team will be hosting their district championship tonight. And so I believe they're playing La Canto. I was trying to look it up really quick, but they're not playing a Marion team, but it is the FHSAA, their district championship tonight at Bellevue. And so go Rattlers on that. And I think that's all I had for today. Yeah, we're good. Thanks.
Thank you, Board Member Campbell. And yes, it's getting to the time of year where there's just no way we can cover it all in our comments and in our activities. And it's such a blessing to be back on solid footing, you know, and, and being able to get back to having all of these events. You know, we went through a lot a few years ago and just, you know, bare bones and trying to, to get through the pandemic, and, and now the invitations are just gushing out and there's just so many great things going on in this district. And I know the Board is busy trying to get to as, as many as they can. Some of us manage to see each other there. Sometimes it's just one. Every once in a while, it's all of us. So I continue to be so grateful for the, the work and the service that surrounds me. Board Member Campbell, I know it's already been said, but like you said, you know, passion projects, and when your passion is policy, when your passion is playgrounds, when your passion is attendance, when your passion is making sure no kid, you know, gets ignored, you know, all of these things. We just bring it all and, and are happy to have the opportunity to do it. So, and thank you for everything that, that all of you do. And we'll see you very soon, because that's how we roll. If there's nothing else for the good of the cause, then we will adjourn. Did you have something?
Oh, I just wanted to, I just wanted to ensure that in my thanks, I made a point of thanking Dr. Gullett's staff, all of the department heads that worked together to put this together, and going back and reviewing and finding out what problems do we have with this, talking about it. That discussion alone, even if we didn't change anything, brings up a whole lot of discussion about where are we with what we're doing? What are the actual policies? What should we be doing? And it's incredibly instructive and useful. But at the same time, they worked to, as teams, to get these things together and funnel them to us so we can get them to the Board. And so there was a lot of people involved in making sure that all of our policies got together for these updates. And every time, they've started learning now to create lists and to create stacks of, for the next policy update, this is something we need to address. And so it is streamlining, and that's thanks to staff. So thank you all so much. You know who you are, because we worked with you incessantly. We probably frustrated you at times, but we thank you.
It's amazing. Strong, positive, deep communication. We're surrounded by so much expertise, that that's what is going to continue to make us greater and greater. So thank you for that final comment, and we shall adjourn, we shall adjourn, at 1:18 PM. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a great rest of your day.